Call a meeting to order, if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, may those generations whose faces we cannot yet see, whose names we may never know, say of us here that we led Orange County into a time of hope for all our children, with the promise of a bright future, a reality for all her people, and an opportunity for each individual to achieve his or her goals in life. May God give us the wisdom to know His purpose and to strengthen us for the good work ahead. And always, always, bless those gathered here and throughout our county, our state, and our nation. Amen.
All right, before we begin, we have several changes to the original agenda. Item four G has been deleted. And items nine, B, C, and D have been added. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to adopt the agenda as...
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, how about the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved. Seconded.
And a motion and seconds. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, carries five zero. We move on then to public appearances.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, our September Employee of the Month began working for Orange County just under a year ago and was nominated by your supervisor. She has consistently demonstrated the type of excellent service her department strives to achieve. She has taken the necessary steps to learn both state and county procurement laws and procedures, work with departments towards completion of their projects, and offer research and assistance in various grant opportunities countywide. She has also taken on the responsibility for coordinating the CIP and procuring approved projects and equipment. In addition, this employee has been a huge asset to the county in the implementation and setup of our new financial software. She spearheaded the creation of a booklet of step-by-step procedures for user departments, which was praised by the software trainers and the end-users alike. The completion of the booklet was a collaborative effort with her coworkers in her department. During the most difficult few weeks of implementation, she was highly instrumental in assisting users outside the department by phone and by actually going to their workplaces in order to make sure that they were able to complete their tasks. Her positive and can-do attitude and spirit have been invaluable, and I continue to receive compliments from departments about how much they appreciate her efforts. This employee continues to improve relationships with other departments and is quick to respond when departments need assistance or vendors aren't performing in accordance with expectations. It's with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to the board our Employee of the Month, Ms. Stephanie Straub. Go tribe! Mr. Chairman, there are two attending and three service awards to be named tonight. The first is Peter Ruston, five years firefighter EMS medic.
Come on, smile, Peter.
The second is Ms. Lillian Bowman, ten years Montpelier collection attendant.
Thank you very much.
And the third, who could not be with us tonight, is Helen Scott, ten years Locust Grove collection attendant. The next is life-saving awards, and we have some special guests in the audience, I believe, tonight. Orange County values our public safety team and their acts of heroism, courage, and fearlessness, and wants to show appreciation for all of these efforts, but especially to those who save a life. On June sixth, the Department of Fire and EMS received a call for a precipitous delivery of premature twins. While the employees at the nine-one-one center gave pre-arrival instructions to the caller, Fire and EMS employees responded to the address. On arrival, the twins had already been delivered, and it was apparent that both infants were premature and needed varying levels of resuscitation. One of the twins required aggressive therapy, including CPR, in order to sustain life. The staff provided the necessary treatment in a somewhat rare and stressful environment while transporting the babies together with the mother and father to the appropriate hospital. Both babies were admitted to the newborn intensive care unit, where they required ongoing intensive care for some time. Today, these babies are healthy and at home with their family, and for at least one of them, this would not have been possible without the initial life-saving treatment she received from her staff. It's with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, that I present to you the third quarter life-saving award recipients. I'll start with Fire and EMS Lieutenant Mark Sikora. Okay, firefighter medic Dottie DeLito, who is here tonight.
Thank you.
Firefighter-
Oh, you want everybody up here?
Sure. The other is firefighter EMT Jamie Colvin. And then I can, the two communication officers were Helen Comer and Lauren Brackawicki.
Most definitely.
Bring up the babies.
Yeah, bring up the babies!
Mark, did you wanna make your introductions?
First of all, I'd like to say, for those of you who don't know, Elaine Anderson with Triad left us a month or so ago. We ran interviews, interviewed, I think, six or eight people. We have hired Mary Ellen Yarish. Mary Ellen comes to us from Culpeper, she's a resident of Culpeper. When I interviewed her, I told her one thing, was that I could teach somebody to be a cop, but I cannot teach anybody to be a Triad coordinator. She has so far done a fabulous job, and I hope that will continue, I think it will. She's a self-starter, a motivator, I can't say enough about her. She has taken, and first off, I want to thank Elaine for everything she did for the program, because she got it up and running and did a great job with it. Mary Ellen is, I think, gonna take it to a new level, so just wanna let you all, just wanna introduce you to her.
Welcome, yes.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Oh, by the way, her office has moved. Kurt now has a little extra space in the basement of the old library. She is at our office. So if you all need her or wanna refer anybody to her, tell her to call our office.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
And I have plans for this room, too.
I figured that was coming.
Next, we'll swear in Lieutenant Eddie Seal. Eddie, if you and your wife Rosso wanna come up?
Okay. Are you ready? If you would, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I am Nelson Eddie Seal.
I am Nelson Eddie Seal.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will promptly perform the duties of the office captain of the Department of Fire and EMS. That I will promptly perform the duties- In and for the county of Orange.
In and for the county of Orange.
Do the best of my knowledge, skill, and ability.
Do the best of my knowledge, skill, and ability.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Casey, we have one more. We have a proclamation for National Farm Safety and Health Week.
Okay. The proclamation to decree the week of September fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, is National Farm Safety and Health Week in Orange County. By virtue of the authority vested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the week of September fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, through September twenty-first, as National Farm Safety and Health Week in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas across the nation, county, and state, organizations have committed to making safety a top priority that is followed through the National Farm Safety and Health Week program. And whereas each year since nineteen forty-four, the third week of September has been recognized as National Farm Safety and Health Week. And whereas this year's theme is working together for safety in agriculture, which reinforces the importance of us all making a joint effort to be sure farmers make it home to their families at night. And whereas agriculture is more than seven times as hazardous as any other U.S. industry, with six hundred twenty-one fatalities in two thousand ten, according to the census of fatal occupational injury. And whereas farmers put in many hours and accomplish difficult tasks, which include operating heavy machinery, handling livestock, and working under hazardous conditions. And whereas to keep farmers safe, training and education are critical. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Supervisors, excuse me, hereby proclaim September fifteenth, two thousand thirteen, through September twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, as National Farm Safety and Health Week, and the start of the year-round effort to promote safe farming, and be it further proclaimed that the Orange County Board of Supervisors urges all those who farm to make safety a priority. All right. And since G has been deleted, next we go to the business spotlight, Craig Hartman, owner of Barbecue Exchange.
Woo-hoo!
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Bring on the pigs.
You know, I gotta say, it was worth coming here just to hear about the twins and what they've done, because that's unbelievable, and so if I look like I've been crying, it really, it's very touching. Anyway, folks, I'm Craig. My wife and I, Donna, who's sitting over there, wait. We own the barbecue exchange, and we wanted to give you a little background, first of all, on us, just so you kind of know our journey to Orange County. It was kind of a long road for us. Donna and I have been married thirty-seven years. We got married at eighteen and seventeen. We met in a culinary school, just like the Bosse's Schools of Virginia. We met in Pennsylvania, and, yeah, we got married a few years back, like I said, thirty-seven years. And I went right away to the Culinary Institute of America in Hyde Park, New York, which is a fantastic school for chefs, and Donna followed me up there with our little baby. We actually had twins, and we lost one, so seeing this particular thing today was real touching for us, and beautiful kids. But anyway, we went up there as kids, we were kids, and in fact, it was funny, we went, when we first got there, we went to the, like, food line, and we had our baby, and the people were like, oh, your little sister is so cute. That's how, that's how young we looked then. Now, she still looks young. My hair color changed, you know. Not sure why, but anyway, we were both kind of born into the hospitality industry. Donna's family, her grandparents had a farm, and they had a tremendous amount of children. I can't, I don't even remember the number, I'm not gonna try to guess, but they had a lot of children, and they had the thing where they had everyday food for their hands, and her grandmother would make, you know, like, eight or nine different kinds of pies, you know, fried chicken, all kinds of sides. I mean, it was really almost like a restaurant environment, and her grandmother was a dietitian, which caused Donna to want to also be in the business, where we met at the vocational school. My family had a hotel in Ocean City, Maryland, on First and Atlantic. If anybody remembers back before nineteen sixty-five, you'll know the Southern Air on First and Atlantic, but then the Old Salt on Seventy-Fifth Street, we had until, well, I can't remember the date, but when I was eighteen and went to chef school, my days at the beach ended. But we, you know, we grew up in this industry. After we got out of the culinary school, our adventure took us to Pinehurst Resort in Pinehurst, North Carolina, where I was a sous chef. Donna still, we had our second child, so she was still at home with the kids. And at that point, I got to work, really, at one of the most beautiful resorts in America, and I worked my way up, actually, at the age of twenty-one, I became the executive chef of the Pinehurst Country Club, which at that time was the largest country club in the entire world, with over a hundred thousand members, members like Richard Petty. Which I, to me, that was the cool member. I mean, we had other members, I mean, Senator Jesse Helm, people like that, but I said, Richard Petty, that was the coolest for me. We went, we went from there to Colonial Williamsburg, where I was the executive sous chef for the Lodging Conference Center, and helped with all things like the summit, you know, that was here with, we had Reagan and Thatcher and Francois Mitterrand. That was a lot of fun for me. Donna started working at a place called Bon Appetit, which was a catering and bakery. We moved from there, we moved a lot, you'll see, this'll only take an hour. We moved to Washington DC from there, where I worked at the Mayflower Hotel, which was the scene of many inaugural parties, Richard Nixon, I did, I made food for Richard Nixon there, that was kinda neat, as well as other people, like the Princess of Thailand and things like that. Donna was a self-employed business owner at the time, and I worked over a hundred hours a week there, by the way. Sometimes I came home, my kids didn't recognize me, and my dog would growl at me, but it was a lot of fun. We had a great time. From there, we moved to the Outer Banks. I opened the Sanderling Inn, if anyone's been, that was the first chef there. And after a few years, we opened our business called The Chef's Corner, which was a catering business, and a place almost like where you would see hotcakes in Barracks Road Shopping Center, something on the lines of that. We had that business for seven years. And from there, we moved to Charlottesville. And we actually came to Charlottesville to go to a soccer game. I'm a soccer fanatic, and back then, there was no professional soccer, and I got Soccer America magazine. They had a player who was like the gift of American soccer named Claudio Reyna. We came up to watch him, stayed at Clifton Inn, heard the owner talking to the innkeepers, and they were arguing back and forth about how they were gonna open this restaurant. They didn't know what they were gonna do, they already worked too many hours. And I gave him my card, said, call me if you need help. He called me two weeks later. Donna and I came up to help him open, we never left. We ended up in Charlottesville. So we opened, and those innkeepers quit, so we became the innkeeper's partner of Clifton Inn in Charlottesville, Virginia. Started off the first night in that restaurant with two people eating. In a week, we had twenty people, the next week, we had forty people eating every night. And it became really one of the finest small luxury hotels in America. We had received some cool awards, you know. We were Country Inn's magazine top five inns in America one year. We were International Living's top five historic hotels in the world at one point, which was pretty neat, because the lady came there to stay, and we ran out of water, and she came down with shampoo in her hair. And for some reason, she still liked us, and I think it was, I think it's probably Donna, you know, she made her feel good. But we had some great awards there, some great success, but we left Virginia to go to Colorado to open a hotel called The Cliff House, another very historic place, which, we were there for three or four years, had a great time. We also got some, you know, best new restaurant in all of Colorado from Denver Post, as well as Condi Ness Traveler Gold List, top one hundred luxury hotels in the world, which we thought was pretty neat. I left there to go to Cornell University to work on the staff of the hotel school, which was fantastic time for me, and Donna then reopened her business. She had a fantastic daycare. She, we called her the child whisperer, actually. She's, she's a better child whisperer than I am a chef, which is kinda neat. And so we had, she had her business, and I was teaching at the hotel school, which we found to be fantastic, but we had grandchildren. And when the grandchildren came, the call for Virginia came back to us. Now, I gotta tell you, I had been doing a dinner at Barbersville Vineyards for seventeen years straight called the Truffle Dinner. And we would fly in from wherever we lived, and we always thought, oh my God, this is the most beautiful place in the entire world. And so, when we had a chance to move south, and Keswick Hall needed a chef, you know, we called, I did my tasting. People used to hire me because they thought I was a good chef, but at Keswick, I had to actually prove myself. So they made me cook an eight-course dinner, you know, for a panel of people, and they decided to hire me. And in the meantime, this call of the, of the, of the entrepreneurial was huge for us. We got, again, some more rewards, you know, Condi Ness Traveler, number two hotel in the world, number one food of all hotels in North America while we were there. And, but we had this dream, Donna and I, we knew as getting into the fifties, you know, this, this fine dining's kind of a young man's game. You know, we'd work a hundred hours a week, we're getting a little tired, and we needed an exit strategy, and we had talked for maybe twenty years about how we were gonna do this. And we had this idea of doing some kind of restaurant that was simple, but real, affordable, and fun, but at the same time, the food was kind of intense on the preparations. And we had this thing in our head, and we looked forever, and one day, just driving down High Street, we saw that building. And it was not in the great shape, you know, at that point, and Jerry, who owned it from the cycle place, you know, he had the piece of plywood that said "For Sale by Owner" on it. And I looked at Donna, I said, hey, I think that might be it. And we went in, we put the offer on, and I told people that I around, that I knew, people at Cornell, people at Keswick, and they're like, Gordonsville, you're gonna put a barbecue, no one is gonna go to Gordonsville for barbecue. And I said, look, nobody goes downtown for barbecue, nobody goes to a strip shopping center for barbecue. They have to go somewhere to eat barbecue. It's gotta feel like they went somewhere. And we really believed it, and we always said, we will never open a business based on emotions. You know, because business is, you know, something you need to be unemotional about. But that darn building just, you know, spoke to us, so we bought the building without even asking zoning, whether we could put a restaurant there, you know, we bought the building without, you know, asking the Rapid Dance Service Authority whether we could put a restaurant there. We bought the building without getting any HVAC, electricians, plumbers. So the first plumbers and electricians we took in, it, oh my God, you can't do this. So we had to figure it all out, which we did. It took a lot of work, but we figured it out. And we, we started to follow our dream, which was to find a place where we could work together, where we could put together a staff that was built on an environment of inclusion, of happiness. We wanted, we wanted to have a staff that was happy. We wanted them to be in a learning and growth situation, where we could teach them what we'd learned over the years. And we wanted them to be proud, and we wanted that, and we wanted to be able to, again, work together daily, because I had worked a hundred hours a week. We also wanted to, you know, we wanted to put together kind of a customer impact on a small, kind of upscale, fast-food casual restaurant, to where the customer felt cared for, they felt it was true southern hospitality, and we believed in one thing, from our travels, and we've been, we like to eat, so we traveled to eat, and we've been to, we've been to, you know, New Orleans, and we've been to, you know, Charleston and Savannah, and places where when you go to eat, you know you're eating in Charleston, you know you're eating in Savannah, you know you're eating. But when you go to central Virginia, a lot of times, you could be, the restaurant could be in New Jersey, it could be in New York, Chicago. And we wanted a place where when people were going to Barbersville Vineyards, which to me, the greatest vineyards on the East Coast, but there's other great ones. When you went there, you go to Montpelier, you're going to the Exchange Hotel, Monticello. People want this kind of feeling that when they go, and then they go someplace to eat, that they're actually having the same experience as going to those places. So when they leave, they don't go, well, you know, I went to, I'm not gonna, I'm not bashing any other business, because I love places. We go out to eat at Fabio's, we love Fabio, we go to the Lightwell, we go, we go everywhere. You know, we go to Palladio all the time, but if you wanna feel like you're in central Virginia, what are you gonna do? And if you're having wine, where are you gonna go? We felt like this was gonna be something that worked. We put together the business plan, we put together a vision. You know, we took that vision, and Sam at Virginia Community Bank still says it was the single greatest business plan he's ever seen in his life. I don't know if he's saying that just to butter me up, but I like it, I'm glad he says it. You know, we felt that this could be the real Virginia cuisine for this tourism, and then we did not ever realize how busy the Route Fifteen corridor was, but that was just icing on the cake. People actually slammed their brakes on there, so we're happy that we'll hopefully maybe get a traffic circle or something around there. But as they're coming down, people will actually slam their brakes on and stop and pull in. They saw, we saw barbecue, and we just pulled in, which is really neat. We, you know, our, our business has become multifaceted. We are now, we have close to thirty-five employees. We thought we were gonna have five. So when we first put our business plan together, we thought, this is a nice impact for Gordonsville, you know, maybe we'll have five employees. We thought we would do maybe fifty people at lunch, fifty people at dinner, we had a low overhead, this is gonna be great. We, we'll do sometimes on a Saturday, a thousand people now, for, just for meals, during the day. Plus, we're, we now have a catering business, which is really growing. It's growing by leaps and bounds. So we'll have maybe a wedding for three hundred, we'll have three or four people coming in to pick up picnics for a hundred or so. So we have thirty-five people, probably fifteen full-timers, the rest of them are part-time right now. So, and now, and most of them are happy, and if they're not, we just, you know, no, I'm just kidding. We hope that we have that environment, you know, of happiness. So, you know, here we have this business now that has the multifaceted aspect, but we are growing. We started to make Virginia hams, and we've started to make bacon. We're looking for a spot, hopefully, again, somewhere in Orange County where we can put a smokehouse, as well as a catering kitchen, because our kitchen now is becoming smaller and smaller. So we have been actively searching, we have been talking to Mr. Zodi about that, and hopefully, we can find the right place, because we can see that our catering business could, you know, compete with Harvest Moon and South Street Catering, some of the bigger ones. We don't wanna compete with Bigger's Banquet, they're our team member, because we're in Orange County. So, but we are really growing. We also want to open a few other styles of restaurant. We hope to open a fish fry one day, not sure where yet. And we would like to open an event space, kind of like what they're doing at Roundton Farm and some of the other places, but one that maybe would be a whole weekend style of an event, where we would actually capture the rehearsal dinner, do a lunch, have the wedding, and maybe have a brunch the next day. So that's something that we're working on right now. And we hope that what we've done has brought good light on the county, as well as, you know, this county spawned Edna Lewis, which is, you know, an icon of food for me as a chef. I'm really sorry, I never got a chance to cook with her, but being in her county, I think, is really cool, and doing kind of soul food is fantastic for us, and we're happy, we love, we love Orange County, and we're, thank you for inviting me out.
Are you back up to a hundred hours a week?
No, 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 we, we, yes and no. We're always working, even when we're together.
I was gonna say, did I hear you say this was your retirement?
Did I hear you say this was your retirement?
This is, this is our retirement. This is our retirement. But you know what? Donna and I get to be together on a daily basis, which um for many years, you know, we couldn't even, you know, we have, we're on, you know, when you're at work, you're on blackout, you know, there's no phones. Um, you know, if you're, if you're cooking, you're taking care of people and um, you know, it's like, look, I'm not gonna, I'm going at six AM, I'll talk to you at midnight tonight. And um, so we're together, we make decisions together. It's fantastic for us. We're really thankful for what's transpired in our business and um like I said, we hope we bring good light to the county and we like living in the county. Yeah, we're, we're all about it, so. Any other questions?
I rode through the other day and I said, man, who died? This must be a really big funeral. And I realized it wasn't a funeral, it was overflow parking from y'all at the restaurant. There was so many cars out there. I was like, oh my goodness. I mean, they were everywhere.
We do have a uh, we, someone said, don't you want a bigger parking lot? I said, not really, I like when it looks full, you know, people like that. People drive past like, oh my god, let's pull in.
I mean, they were parked down High Street.
Yeah, they parked down High Street. We do, you know, we are renting the building from the Predies beside us and we are hoping to put our ham operation retail in there. Um, something like what Jim Kite is doing with Kite's Hams, but just a different style. Uh, we think it works really well for our business and for the tourism here. People wanna be able to leave the county with something real and and if you look back at Virginia, the most real food uh that really has history in Virginia are the smoked meats, Virginia hams and bacon are are in. And we feel, we feel really great about it. Hopefully you get come, get a chance to try our bacon. You know, we put it on our dishes right now, but we really don't sell it, but when we're there, we'll be able to sell it. We have some good, some good local bacon. Um, actually, we're gonna be doing single batch bacons there, so you'll know that it came from, you know, Papa Weaver's farm or Patterson's farm, what the breed is and the whole thing, which is gonna be pretty neat. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, with that, we move on to public comment. Is anyone signed up?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we have one speaker to sign up, Harry Pace, um, from Unionville.
Hello, I know you're gonna be working on the comprehensive plan this evening, and I just wanted to um reiterate how important it is that um we have a plan that really um closely uh identifies with what Orange County is. And according to um the extension office, we have moved from um seven for gross agricultural receipts to number four. And um your agricultural two district that you've identified is far too big. It's a hundred and eight thousand acres. And um if you want in that area that you've des- designated to identify parcels that are less than twenty acres and call them Ag Two, that might be reasonable. But to cause, to um call all the um acreage in that huge district, which is the biggest one, um Ag Two is irresponsible and disingenuous. So I hope that you will reconsider that at your work session and really label parcels less than twenty acres in that area. The um other issue, um what you're doing by um diminishing with this Ag Two um label is it would be like if we had the um, the number one economic um engine for the state of Virginia is agriculture. You guys might not like to hear that, but that's the fact and facts are what they are. And in Orange County, we're number four now, and that that statistic will be released in uh February. But we're number four. So that's like if we were creating um in the state of Virginia, the um we were number four in the state for producing cars. And car, the production of cars was the number one economic engine for the state of Virginia. And we're number four out of ninety-five counties. You ought to be behind that all the way, not trying to dismantle it. And that's what this Ag Two is gonna do to agriculture. So if you're for business and you're for um strengthening our economy, you do not diminish the incredible industry that we have right now in Orange County. And that Ag Two um designated designation very much does that. So as I said, if you want to look through that and say any parcel less than twenty acres, we're gonna identify as Ag Two and everything over stays in Ag One. That would be really important and really show um sense of some sincerity to um the believability of the comprehensive plan. Um, the other thing I wanted to um ask is, um, I I hope that you will start um putting a time for public comment, because I know that um you all respect the citizens of Orange County and wanna be able to hear from them and you understand that your whole budget is funded by them and all of your your technology, your equipment, all the staff is paid by them. So I think it's really important for the hardworking citizens of Orange County that are working every day not to have to try to get off early, to get here by four or five, which for most meet people would mean they have to get off early, to get here and sit and wait and wait till public comment comes up. Um, I would hope that you would put in a time and that it's sometime after five thirty, so that they don't have to get off early and say, this is, you know, the time you need to be here, if there's a concern that you would like to share with us. So I um, I hope you will designate a time for public comment so that the citizens who fund all of this can have a time to know to be here, to speak. Thank you.
We had one additional speaker sign up, Auntie Rapids, two five four zero seven Lafayette Drive, Rhodesville.
Hi, um, I'm here this afternoon to talk to you about the village of Rhodesville. And specifically, I mean Rhodesville from one end of Lafayette Drive to the other end of Lafayette Drive and not the zip code that the United States Post Office has made a great big circle and said, you are Rhodesville and the rest of you are not. What once was a very vibrant and alive uh village with commerce and economic ability, uh entrepreneurship and basic by right uses um no longer exist uh in that very specific area that is Rhodesville. Um, during the time when um Highway Twenty was developed, uh that the specific properties along the old Highway Twenty, which is what Lafayette Drive is, um was changed to a limited residential community with um very, very little allowances for any kind of um at-home businesses or um agricultural activities that could uh take place in the village proper itself. Uh, and as the older families have either died out, sold or moved away, um, the grocery store has closed, the market has closed. You know, there's no longer a Faulners Hardware, it's down here in the middle of town. Uh, there's just nothing in Rhodesville. And we would like to see um maybe not rezoning, but some amending to um what is currently in the zoning to allow those of us who have lived there and invested our money and our lives in Rhodesville to be able to do something just a little bit different. Um, if you look at section seventy-three-three-one in the zoning, it's specifically prohibits such areas from traffic, noise and other effects of commercial and industrial use. Well, I live on the corner of Black Walnut Run and my house is the house that Fred Thayer built. It is also the property where Thomas Rhodes lived and I take care of the Thomas Rhodes Family Cemetery for which Rhodesville is named for. That's my corner property. Well, Black Walnut Run, where it intersects Lafayette Drive, if you go up Black Walnut Run, you all know that Bonnie Plant Farms is back there. From March to July, Black Walnut Run and Lafayette Drive is a major interstate highway and their trucks fly up and down. And if you ever wanna limit us from traffic, well, there's no way you can do that because of Bonnie Plants and the church. If you've ever been to a Baptist church on Sunday, you know, Sunday morning and Sunday night, zoom, everybody comes in and as soon as they say amen, zoom, they go down to eat dinner because we do at the barbecue exchange. So the traffic zooms in and the traffic zooms out. But also behind us on Pine State, we have Aerojet. Aerojet is set right back across on the other side of those trees. And whoever wants to protect us from noise, well, come to my house and let's see. You can hear the countdown timers. You can hear the alarm blast warning that something is fixing to happen. And then we get to hear all those jet propulsion engines when they test fire. And it will make your windows shake. Now, I am not in any way at all complaining about Aerojet and I'm not complaining about Bonnie Plants, because I planted some of Bonnie Plants, garden plants in my yard and in my garden this year. And I had five hundred pounds of tomatoes to prove that they have good seeds and good plants. So I spent the whole month of August canning in my garden. So you know, Bonnie Plants hires a lot of the uh people in that very small area who can't drive somewhere else for a job. There are a lot of people in our area who also work for Aerojet, but they have to drive for their job, of course. But you know, Aerojet and Bonnie Plants are very good business neighbors to Rhodesville. And none of us that live out there have anything at all that we can say bad about either of those companies. Because they provide, not only um do they put Rhodesville on the map for technology, because man, there's some really geeky, great stuff going on back there. But I mean, it is, we're, my husband is a computer programmer and he's done things for the, for this um for NASA and things like that over the course of his career. And so it's like, you know, that is the coolest thing going on back there. It just, you know, it just makes you happy to know that little tiny Rhodesville has got this huge big part in these big things that are going on in our government. So while all of those companies are really good business partners and neighbors, none of us who live specifically on Lafayette Drive have the opportunity to in turn be a good business neighbor to any of those people. I have spoken to every, nearly every homeowner and every resident that lives on our street who has property on our road. I have a petition and I have a map and there are seventy-seven homes that are properties that front Lafayette Drive. And I have talked and spoken to every single one of them except two properties which are in foreclosure, which means I'll have to go through whatever bank network to talk to whoever's handling those product, those properties. And there are six families who own property out there, but they live elsewhere because it's properties that they inherited. And some live in Texas and some live in Northern Virginia and some live in Fredericksburg. And since Friday afternoon, I haven't had the opportunity to um address them in any way, in which is something that I plan to do. No person um that I have spoken to has any op- opposition at all whatsoever to amending some of the zoning to allow us to have just a little bit of of economic freedom off of our property to sell our extra vegetables, to sell eggs from our chickens that come in extra, um to sell honey or even, you know, homemade soaps and things that um the agricultural department sees as a private cottage industry and that you are well within your rights to do in um the agricultural setting. But we are permitted from, uh inhibited from putting a sign out front that says, I make jams and jellies and you can come in my driveway and you can buy them. Or I bake apple pies and you can come and buy those types of things. And so we've put together a petition and like I said, all of my neighbors, I have spent uh ten hours a day for the last four days talking to every single one of them. And they think this is something that would be wonderful for our neighborhood. Because while all of the older residents have already, you know, uh, they've died. And what's left is properties that have been purchased by new families that have small children. And what we are seeing is most of us that live out there, we're not spending our money in Orange County. We are going to Madison and we're going to Culpeper and we're going to Spotsylvania County. And we're spending our money in those places because those places offer the things that we want to buy and feed our children. Um, I go to Yoder's and I buy the organic milk that they have there. And there are uh farmers in Orange County who sell their milk to Trickleling Springs Creamery and they pasteurize and process that milk and pa- and package it and they bring it right back to the community. But they bring it to Madison and they bring it to Culpeper and they bring it to Spotsylvania. And I do believe there's only maybe two places in Orange County that they bring it to, but they're too far for us to drive, you know, conveniently to go get those items. The I'm not here to say anything negative about any business that's in Orange County, because we all need that revenue to pay everybody's bills. But the vegetables that I buy do not come from the gr- commercial grocery store. They don't come from Food Line and they don't come from Walmart. I go to where people are producing those items and I buy seasonally what we need and that's what we eat. And so we're asking that you look at the uh zoning regulations, which is a limited residential for the villages like Rhodesville and Unionville, where our hands are tied and we cannot um do really anything uh publicly come out and say, I have all these things for sale. You know, it has to be done secretly on the slot or you have to give them away. And you know, and that's kind of an unfair disadvantage, because I own ten acres and my hands are tied. But the guy who lives right beside me and all of his property that runs along mine, he can do anything that he wants to do. And he doesn't have to come down here and ask you if he can have your permission to do it. As long as he is within the agricultural guidelines, he can do whatever he wants to do. But we can't. And it's a really unfair disadvantage for those of us who because we decided to buy one of those beautiful homes on Lafayette Drive, that we cannot take advantage of our property in the same way. It's really an unfair um um usage. We have no by right usages of our property um like our neighbors do. And we would um ask you humbly and respectfully if you will consider um some of the um zoning for our location. I am not coming here to ask you to look at the whole county. I'm asking you to look at Rhodesville because I think we're very unique where we are. We sit right in between the big highway and what Bonnie Plants has made as a secondary highway. We're, we're just a a little bow in the road and um there's really nothing out there that services us. Because there are a lot of people in our neighborhood who do not have the health or the uh transportation to go fifteen miles to Walmart to buy what they need. Nor do they have it to drive fourteen miles to come to Food Line for what they need. And I've got several neighbors who will not eat a grocery store tomato. But with all the extra tomatoes that I had this year, if I put a sign out at the end of my driveway, my neighbors would have come over and said, hey, can I buy a couple pounds of tomatoes or, you know, and that is bringing commerce and boosting our local economy in Rhodesville. And when it helps one of us, it helps all of us. And um I've talking, talked to, I cannot speak today, I'm sorry. I have spoken with Mr. White about my ideas and I think um Greg is kinda on board with what, you know, we've just really looked at everything and tried to figure out what we can do. And we've been regulated to the point that in those little parts of the county, we have no rights to do anything. And had I known that when I bought that property, I would have thought twice about buying it. And this is where you get into the ugly thing of perhaps maybe a real estate agent lied to us. Because we saw a piece of paper that clearly said we were zoned agricultural. And so we followed through with the purchase of this property and no sooner had we put our names on those mortgage papers and got home, well, this suddenly says we're residential and that's not right. How did that happen? So you know what? Nobody else on my street that I have talked to in the last three days knew that they were zoned a limited residential either. They thought they were in an agricultural area, because we are sitting out there in the middle of nowhere and there's nothing around us. And so we just don't understand um what we may have been protected from fifty years ago is not what is happening now. And um I just think it needs to be reviewed and I've got the support of my community behind me. And I respectfully ask you all to consider um just loosening the grip just a little bit and letting us, you know, do just a few things.
Just, Mr. Reb's a couple of points of clarification, so that the board
Just, Mr. Graves, a couple of points of clarification so that the board, uh, it turns out literally in, i- if we were talking about her backyard property, it's zoned ag. Just happens that her backyard is not zoned ag.
Right.
And they actually have a place in mind, which unfortunately, based on the zoning ordinance, is across the street from where she lives, that's in the R1 district. It's a, it's a vacant property right now, I think.
Yes, it is.
And, uh, they wanna use that to set up their little, uh, merchandising operation. But of course they can't because of the ordinance. So that's a, that's really the, the little bit more detail about the squeeze.
And when you say that, can I please clarify that, um, what we're talking about is not a wayside stand, like you get in twenty and then things that are flagged up on the side of the road and they're selling vegetables? We do not have anything like that in mind. And when, please forgive me because I'm not speaking bad about anybody, but when someone says, "Why didn't you take your tomatoes to the farmer's market?" Sure, I could've gone down to Locust Grove and I could've come down here to the shopping center in the middle of town. But if any of y'all have gone down there on Saturdays, you see that that is nothing but a glorified swap meet and a flea market. And that is not a farmer's market environment. And the people who have legitimate items to sell at the farmer's market are signing up on the waiting list and we are waiting to go to the farmer's market in Charlottesville. Because it is a legitimate farmer's market where you can buy a homemade pie, a loaf of bread, a tomato that somebody grew, a cucumber that doesn't have wax on it, and a jar of jelly or some pickles that somebody actually boiled the vinegar and poured it over and put a lid on the jar. We do not have that ability in Orange County to sell any of those items. But I can drive ten miles from my house and go to Miller Farms and I can buy every single one of those things. And half the stuff in that store has come from Orange County and we're not getting any credit for it. It's a disservice to us. Because our money is bleeding out in every direction into other communities. And it needs to stay here. I bought my home because I did the research and learned who lived there and the history of Rhodesville. And we decided that we were gonna invest our interests in Rhodesville and build a home and build a life and raise a family. And right now, my kids have no initiative to stay where we are, continue what I'm doing and serve our community. I've got girls who will have to leave my community to even, oh, you know how these girls are with makeup and hair. And if she wants to be in any kind of fashion industry or even have a, a hair salon, she's got to leave our community to do that. My oldest girl is in the healthcare. Um, she works for a laboratory and she does medical testing. She can't do that in Rhodesville. I mean, and I don't see any laboratory coming out, so don't get me wrong. Just right now, there is just no economic advantage for us to stay in Rhodesville and for our kids to want to do anything to build their lives in Rhodesville as they, you know, come of age and decide what they're gonna do with the rest of their life. And I just, you know, I prayed about this and I'm, I'm just coming to y'all and asking y'all to please just loosen that stranglehold a little bit and let us show you what little tiny villages in this county can do if you give us a fair shake.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alrighty. Okay. Move on to board comment. Okay, hearing none. We'll move to the action items. First one, presentation of the fiscal year fifteen budget calendar.
Yeah, really.
See, it isn't so.
Yeah, that's what I said, really.
I know. It is depressing.
Thanks for foreshadowing there.
In your packet is a, uh, draft of a budget calendar. And, um, you can see that it's very similar to last year. Um, Connie did work on it and we have, um, a little bit of a different format, um, that actually shows the month and we've got the days highlighted on there that we actually have meetings scheduled. Um, but it's very similar to last year in terms of the way the dates fall. And it would result in the budget being adopted on April eighth of two thousand and fourteen.
We have talked to the schools and they'll be prepared to meet with us on October eighth for a, um, joint meeting, just to talk about CIP. That would be the first date on the schedule.
I make a motion that we adopt, um, the calendar as proposed by staff.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All the tables say aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay. The second action item, we have to wait until seven. So, we've been to what Mr. Boards, Commissions, Committees. Yes, and I, I already know that I'm going to be, but we're receiving two awards, so that's okay. I'm more than happy to do that. So are you officially making a motion to nominate me?
I am officially making a motion to, um, nominate you to...
Voting delegate.
Voting delegate, thank you. I drew a blank.
I will motion to have a second.
Yes. Second.
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay.
We don't need an order.
Do we, do we have any other appointments to any of the open spots on the...
Who's going? Me, Teal and Lee. Uh, I nominate Lee to be the alternate.
Second.
Traitor.
All the favors say aye.
Hey, hey, Lee, you gotta be quicker, buddy, you gotta be quicker.
Got it.
Alright, no other appointments then, move on to the discussion items. Liaison appointment to Orange County Volunteer Chiefs Association, Jeff Harkness.
First, I'd like to apologize for, uh, Chief Joyce slipping out. But we had a serious medical call next door, so we felt that was obviously, um, more important.
I hope you found that took more time than it should've.
Yes, so, uh, anyways, um, several months ago, I approached the board about having a member, um, attend the Fire Chiefs Associating, Association meeting. Uh, last month, Mr. Frame attended and, um, was very, very well received from the, the volunteer fire companies from my perspective. I think it was a very valuable meeting. I'm here tonight to ask that if the board would, um, appoint a permanent member to, uh, attend the meetings when, when possible. My intention, again, as I stated when I first came before you, was to have fire and EMS represented at the meetings. Um, the last meeting EMS was not able to be there, but they, they have expressed some interest in attending the meetings. Public safety, obviously, is a huge part of the county's budget. Um, again, I think there's value in, in attending some of these meetings so that you can see some of the needs and challenges that are, are facing the, um, the volunteers as well as the, the career emergency responders. Um, just some of the relevant issues that, you know, are on the table. The, the funding of both career and the volunteers, the radio system, the nine-one-one center. But also too, I think you're gonna see some of the good things that we're doing, working together to get the most bang for our buck, um, for lack of better words, of county money. Uh, Mr. Frame saw firsthand how through a joint purchase of turnout gear, we actually purchased thirty-four sets of turnout gear between the career staff and the, the volunteer agencies going off an existing contract where we saved somewhere between four and five hundred dollars a set. Having a board member is gonna continue to encourage those joint style purchases, which is a good way of doing business, especially with the, with county funds. Um, some other good things that were happening is, uh, on, on the purchasing front. Um, the fire hose that the fire companies have bought, they were doing that on a joint purchase where they went out and negotiated the best prices. But again, I, I think there's, there's value in it. And I'm, I'm seeking your input tonight to see if you'd be interested in, um, appointing a permanent member.
Well, I might mention that, uh, I probably unleashed a tiger, uh, when I suggested that the Fire Chiefs Association has, uh, a pretty important part of our, uh, public service. Uh, come here on a, whenever they feel they need to and, and speak to the board and public comment whenever they've got an issue. And we may, uh, see more of that. And, uh, I'm sure that they won't be coming here offering money to us. Uh, but I think that, uh, they, I mean, I, I could sense that the meeting, that they felt that, uh, they were, they were at least being heard. Uh, I couldn't promise them very much, but, uh, I think at least that they had a chance to, uh, make their views known. And I, I would, uh, I would support this.
Late night lead.
Sorry. Uh, I'm on duties on Wednesdays and that's why they hold it. Uh, so as long as, uh, we don't have late night calls, I can probably make those meetings.
I think one of the things we talked about, and I know it, there's, there's value in having, um, the same person, but all of us kinda talked about that there, that Wednesday night, there was a conflict. And one of the things that we actually discussed is kinda taking turns going...
Which wouldn't bother me at all.
Which would give us, um, each exposure to it and then we were, would report back. And I would, I would, I would gladly support that. Whereas all, all, each of us would make a commitment at, in rotating fashion.
I think that's probably better.
Or, you know, if you can, and if you can't, then whoever can.
Well, I think, I think we need, uh, we need to schedule it then so that, uh, that people, uh, know that this individual, this supervisor is gonna be there. Because I think it's, I think it'd be very useful for all of the supervisors to hear what, uh, uh, what issues are coming before them.
Should, should we do it on a, I mean, one way to approach it is to have you be the designated, representative, but, you know, in, in those cases where you can't go or there's an opportunity for someone else that, that...
Well, anytime I can, I will try to find somebody else because I think it's useful for them.
Yeah.
But it...
I, I, I think that would give...
Cause you have a meeting on Wednesday nights, right?
I have, I have a meeting on the fourth Wednesday of the month, Lake Anna. And that, that was...
Okay. So, um...
Well, I know, I just got it last minute because I thought you were gonna, I think they had you scheduled, scheduled originally.
I thought we had discussed something else, yeah, I just, um... I mean, I think we'll make a co- I, I, I don't know how to word this, but that we make a commitment that one of us can be at, at the meeting. And if, cause you have something that night too, don't you?
I don't know, I have so damn many committees, I can't...
Well, well, let me say this, I have one more month of that fourth Wednesday night commitment. And then it gets better for me for a while. I'm teaching, I teach a class on Wednesday nights, so it, it, it will be up by the end of October, so...
Well, I think, I think it's particularly useful for all the supervisors to hear, hear from them. Uh, so I wouldn't, uh, have any, any difficulty with, uh, trying to coordinate, uh, somebody attending.
So you'd be like, you're willing, what I hear you saying is you're willing to be like the point of contact.
I will, I will put myself on the list, but I will try to find somebody else each night I can.
Okay. Well, I will, um...
That does give them a point of contact regardless of who's going.
That's what I was thinking, is that way you, you, you might not be the one to show up, but they, they know how to, you know...
Well, I got some feedback from it.
Mm-hmm.
And I want you to know, you, you were reflecting exactly the feedback that I was given. Um, they, they thoroughly enjoyed Lee being there and, um, uh, felt that the discussion was productive and, um, and, and, you know, they, they, they really walked away feeling a little energized, um, from the exchange that, that they had with Lee. So I think it's a worthwhile...
Well, the, the next, uh, the next Fire Chiefs Association on the twenty-fifth already has a conflict, uh, with all of us. For the, uh, uh, for that, uh...
Fred Pribble.
The Fred Pribble, uh, uh, presentation. So, uh, I mean, those are...
And I think everybody realizes that it, nobody's gonna be there a hundred percent of the time, but...
Okay, alright. But I, I will, I will take, uh, I will take coordination responsibility for that.
Yeah, you made a motion, I'll second your motion.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second, which would make Lee a point of contact with the idea that we're still trying to rotate people in. Um, all the tables say aye?
Uh...
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Then we'll put this on the organizational meeting list for January.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright.
Alright, uh, duh, 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 duh... Yeah.
Good evening, supervisors.
Change it to subdivision ordinance for road standards.
This has been an issue of, since I've, uh, come to Orange County with, uh, the, the lack of private road standards. Right now, there's several references in our subdivision ordinance that refer to a state standard. Um, I've had conversations with Anthony Hurlock with VDOT. And he said they don't have a standard for subdivision roads that are not gonna be incorporated into the state's system. So, perf- m- m- my opinion is that I, I don't think it's right to impose a higher standard on minor subdivisions. And so what I've come to you all with is to seek to amend our subdivision ordinance so we can set a standard for private streets that, you know, really have no, um, plans, I, I should say, um, for future development. They'd still have to meet the fifty-foot easement standard that's in fifty-four dash one seventy-seven Private Streets section of the subdivision ordinance. But what staff did was just put together, uh, some draft language that's in your packet that's based on state, state fire code. I, Craig Johnson, uh, had provided me with the, with the language. And I spoke to Chief Harkness about it, um, last year. This has been on hold for about a year or so, so we could get the comprehensive plan through. But I think it's, it's good, it's fair, it's transparent and predictable for people who may wanna create a three-lot subdivision. Because as it stands now, you don't have to have a new road if you have two lots or less. But once you go over that three lots or two lots, you have to create a road. And given the way I, I read the ordinance, you have to build to this state standard. And that's, I just, it's just not right, quite honestly. I don't think it's fair to someone who wants to create a minor subdivision. And what I'm saying is up to seven lots. Because our subdivision ordinance says eight lots or more is a major subdivision and has to go through the public review process. But for something that's, uh, less than eight lots, I think it's a reasonable standard, sixteen-foot width. And you still have to have a fifty-foot access easement. And it can be a paved surface, it could be asphalt or gravel. And it would have to meet some standards for ditches, uh, width on ditches. And, uh, surface, uh, depth to surface.
Is there any requirement for, well, you say, uh, six inches of compacted acreage? Will that, uh, basically, cause you, you, we don't have anything that necessarily talks about maintenance of the road.
Well, Supervisor Frame, we do have something, a provision in our family subdivision ordinance. And that's baffled me, is that they have to submit covenants regarding, uh, road maintenance agreement. But it's deficient on the regular subdivision side of...
I'm just concerned, uh, man, I've been down roads where, uh, the potholes are a foot deep and, uh, we barely make it down with an ambulance. And I just don't wanna find ourselves in that kind of a thing. If this, uh, if this standard is something that, uh, will be able to provide emergency service, then I, I don't have too much of a problem.
Right, well, that's why I saw...
The whole driver is the access to emergency services.
Right, and that's why I based my recommendation, my draft language, on the state fire code for their access, for their vehicles to get through.
Do we, you know, with, with this standard, as I read it, you're, you wanna apply it to any new, uh, construction? Do we have any issue with the hundreds, maybe more than hundreds of what will now be non-conforming roads in the county?
Having lived in one of...
Where do the unintended consequences of that come?
I'm gonna interject, and I would say we already have that with the subdivision ordinance. It's saying on that third lot, you have to get it up to state standards. And that's already happening.
And, but...
But, and if this...
But there are no state standards.
There are no specifics, well, the, the state standards for roads that, that are intended to remain in private hands, right now, the way I read the ordinance is that you still have to build them to state standards. If we're gonna reference the design standards for state roads for subdivisions, then you're gonna have to build it with certain thickness of asphalt and subbase and then base.
I, I, as I read the ordinance, for a family subdivision, that's correct. For the others, it, it, it's not that clear.
Well, I will tell you this, I've been copied on some letters that people in my district have received, and this zoning administrator and the previous one, that was their interpretation of the code, and they were told they were gonna have to get it up, you know, so.
Well, I mean, there's no question, this is an issue that, that i- is, you know, of some concern. Where I was going with my question though, is in terms of unintended consequences, is we have, I, I happen to live on one, for example, and many of us do, that wouldn't come anywhere close to this, uh, in terms of standards. And, and do we get to the point someday where we, we can't be serviced by fire and rescue because we're not, we don't have these standards? You know, where, where does this take us, uh?
It's, it's moving from where we are now, if, if the border were to adopt a version of this, it would move us forward from here on out. But the existing roads, I've not seen, man, I've only been down a few roads in my site visits, uh, I have not seen a lot of private subdivision roads that are paved, quite honestly, and, or that have, you know, eighteen-foot or twenty-two-foot, you know, ditch to ditch width on it. So most of the private, um, drives I've been down that serve more than three lots or four lots are already gravelled. I showed you all pictures last time of some that are already in existence. What I'm trying to do is say, here are our standards, because obviously there hasn't been standards set for previous subdivisions. And I think it's, just from my perspective, this just makes it a little bit more.
Let me give you a scenario that concerns me, look at number three. And, and four together, so, so there's no difference now in family or non-family, the way this is reading.
I'm just trying to get on equal ground, right, right.
I know, I'm, I'm not really debating with you, I'm just sort of putting.
Oh, sorry.
And, and, and I have a, a house, and my in-laws have a house off this road, and my son wants to build on that road, and now I gotta build a, a, a road to this standard. Is that what we wanna say? I mean, if it is, let's, let's recognize that that's what we wanna say.
You have two houses there, and you go to build that third house now, you have to put in a, a pay.
That's right.
Entrance.
That's right.
This is relaxing the standards.
You know, I think, one of the calls I get, and it, and it, it's probably if I, if I put them in columns, the type of calls I get, I get more complaints about the private road. Exponentially above everything else I get.
Sure.
Um, you know.
So, so do I.
Roads, road standards, I'll be, somebody sitting in here right now that's having problems with their roads in there. It, I mean, it, it's, it's just the phone call we get all the time.
Right.
Above everything else.
We get, we get the people coming in and saying, our road is unpassable, and we need the county to fix it for us. And basically, we, we basically reject that.
Right.
And, and, uh, you know, and so, I mean, it's, uh, uh, this is an attempt to avoid that. Uh, but yes, uh, yeah, I mean, in, in your case, you go to a, you go to a third home there and, uh, uh, and you're, you're, you're trying to come up with a, a, a different standard.
Do we have any idea what the price of a sixteen-foot wide, six-inch deep, uh, road is for a mile?
No, but we could come up with estimates, I mean, that's just something that we took out from.
It's deeper than asphalt that you'd have to have, because the current standard says if you put the third house in, it's asphalt.
Yeah, and the issue with that, though, supervisor, and the super, it's, the issue with that supervisor, good one, is that, that the third lot or fourth lot, they have to pave it all the way back. And so they're basically paving for the other roads. But a, a thing that's included in this, and that's, that's overlooked often, is that there's a notification, a certification on the final plats already in existence. It's, uh, I'm not even gonna embarrass myself by trying to quote the citation, that says that th- th- these roads are gonna be private and, you know, will not be turned over to the state. That's how it reads now for the minor subdivisions. So there's already that provision, family subdivisions, as I mentioned earlier, currently have the requirement that you have to submit covenants, along with your subdivision plat, for a minor subdivision, for a family subdivision, rather, that states that this, it's a, it's the property owner's responsibility to maintain these, this road. And we don't have that for our regular minor subdivisions.
Alright, well, then there's my question, cause what concerns me even more than the having to do it is number one. And maintained. Well, what does maintained mean?
To what standard?
Who, to what standard? I mean, you know, taking a, taking a tractor with your straight blade and scraping it, um, who, who's going out and monitoring it? You know, is it gonna be complaint-driven, so when one neighbor is, because, you know, your family subdivision, like most family subdivisions, don't alw- you know, vast majority of them don't remain family subdivisions, and then a new person moves in and they want the road back to what this ordinance says, and the rest of the people don't want it, but.
My, and I don't wanna sound callous, but when you move out into the rural areas and you build on a, out in the country, you know, you don't get those urban amenities. And I mean, what I wanna do is provide notice that, you know, you're out here in the country, here's the standards, you choose to, you choose to live on the road with these standards.
No, but I'm, I'm, but you're saying and maintained, I'm asking you, what does and maintained mean?
That's something I think we could work out. I, I don't have a, an answer, you know, a, a pat answer for that. I think it'd be something that we'd wanna discuss, do we want them, uh, and that's, I, let me, let me back up. I think that's something that the property owners would have to decide, what they consider to be maintenance. I mean, it's, it's clearly not gonna be a county responsibility, nor state responsibility. And I think a lot of the misinformation that's out there is that people say, well, they expect the county to do something. It's not our role, we don't have a county highway engineer or a county highway department.
I guess one of my concerns, I, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the concept of doing this, I think we do need to do something. I'm a little concerned about the, the, the extent. I mean, a sixteen-foot wide road is, you know, that's almost a two-lane road. And most driveways, especially in family subdivisions, are, there's no chance you're gonna get a two-lane road going through.
And we had that discussion at the planning commission.
And the other thing is a ten-foot, uh, I, I'm sorry, a ten percent slope, well, now all of a sudden, you've eliminated a lot of properties that can't even be built upon, cause ten percent slope is not all that steep.
And that's typically asked to standards.
I, I understand where they came from, I'm just saying, I'm not sure these are just standards that, that meet what, meet our needs right now. So we, wh- while looking at this and trying to do something to improve where we are now, and maybe so, in some cases even, even softening the requirement, uh, i- i- I think is a good idea, but we gotta be really careful about what, uh, what the details are of this.
As I say, I, my, my concern is, uh, we can't get to somebody who needs to be gotten to. And, uh, and, uh, I mean, he, I've been to times when I've gotten halfway down the road, and we ended up carrying somebody by hand about a quarter of a mile because we couldn't get any further to the house. Uh, you know, and that's, uh, and that was no good for that individual, uh, and, you know, I mean, I just think that we need to have, uh, some, some standards that, that protect the individual. I mean, if we just say, hey, you can do anything you want, well, you may not get any fire.
But you don't need sixteen feet wide.
No, no, I agree, we don't need.
But not to be over dramatic, I don't know that life-saving award would've gone out tonight if you'd have had that case. If they'd have had to hike a half a mile into those babies, we might not have been doing that tonight.
Well, this is a starting point, and this is something staff came up with, but we, you know, we, we feel it's important enough to get this before y'all, um, and get started on it, if y'all are okay with this.
Well, if you, you have seven lots, sixteen feet, it's not that much to ask.
Not at seven lots, I agree.
Well, you gotta start somewhere, and where we are now, where it starts at three, you go to a very nice expensive asphalt road.
But that, and that needs to be fixed, I agree.
With, with, with commercials, entrance standards.
I have any problems with, with backing off, as long as, as long as the, the, if we, we require a design that gets emergency vehicles in there. Uh, and I'm not sure, uh, how you do the maintaining part, because unless you have a homeowners association that can, that has taxing powers or assessment powers to get the money, if I got, uh, you know, seven people or six people on a road, and, uh, uh, and two of them wanna fix it and the other don't, uh, it doesn't get fixed.
Yeah, it's a tough, tough subject.
I, I love bringing easy stuff to y'all, so.
So, so what we are asking you to do is to come back and look at this and see, can we do anything not quite as stringent? I don't, I mean.
Why don't, why don't we just go ahead and send it to the planning commission and let them do their magic?
I, I think that's the thing to do, send it to the planning commission, let them do some, some work in terms of what, you know, if it's not sixteen, is it eleven and a half, fine, you know, let us, let them tell us that.
And so staff, you know, as always, we bring you the, the tightest standards we can, and we go from there.
The other thing is, is, uh, should we be doing different between a family subdivision or another, or a standard subdivision?
Well, I think we want them to debate several things, the difference there.
Access standards.
In a family subdivision particularly, does a third house trigger the, the thing? They need to, they need to examine that, they need to examine the sixteen, they need to examine the ten-foot, the ten percent slope. I mean, I, I think we would want them to look, you know, in, in a real-world setting in all of these parameters.
I, I mean, I, I guess we can talk about that later. Um, I get the deal with the family subdivision, but like I'm gonna say, not all subdivisions start out at, or they start out as a family and end as a family subdivision, so I don't know that the differentiation between the family subdivision.
The only, the only place is you've got some buy rights stuff as a family subdivision.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I think in terms of the, uh, standards, they ought to be consistent.
Well, remember what we're saying, we're saying you can't build that third house unless you meet these standards.
Some standards, yes.
Whatever, whatever the standards, I mean, that's what we're, that's what we're saying.
And that's what actually is already saying it.
Yeah.
I, I understand that, and I, and we're just, we're just saying it differently.
I'm trying to make it easier.
Well, we're trying to back off of it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's backing off a whole lot, considering it had to be paid.
It had to be a fifty-foot right-of-way commercial entrance.
Yeah, and the general assembly actually increased their, uh, their traffic, I think it's up to five lots now, for low-volume commercial insurance. So they changed that about two years ago. And so this brings us, you know, a little bit closer to what state considers an issue, so.
I have a problem with as long as it's got the fifty-foot.
Access.
Right-of-way. Because at some point in time, if it goes to eight lots.
Yep.
Then at that point in time, you've got the right-of-way there so that you can.
That's right.
Do something, and we don't have people come in and go, my road, it's like, you don't have fifty feet.
I, I agree with that point, maybe, maybe by reference, we should, we should include the fifty-foot.
Probably gotta mark down section fifty-four, one seventy-seven.
They realize this is not the entire list of requirements.
And we always.
It's somewhere else in the code, but that's.
No, I'll certainly put that, add that section in there.
And, and my question too is, is this something we can do here? The planning commission still has got a zoning ordinance to do, a subdivision ordinance to do. It's, it's taken two years to get the comp plan, and we're still not ready to get that finished. So is this something we can accomplish here ourselves, or do we need to pass it?
It's, it's a zoning ordinance change, requires planning commission, doesn't it?
Yes, sir, this, uh, for the subdivision ordinance, and it's, uh, I've, I've brought it before the planning commission last Thursday preemptively, um, just to get their thoughts on this, and they tend, they agreed, uh, to hold the public hearing, if y'all were okay with this on October third.
Alright.
And we're gonna get those other selected text minutes I brought to y'all, uh, last November on that as well, so we can get those out of the way and move forward some development standards.
So then, what we need to do is decide if we wanna go ahead and send them to go to public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Right.
So moved.
Motion, I have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Okay. Uh, next, formation of Route Three Strategic Visioning and Steering Committee. At the planning, uh, commission meeting the other night, uh, Chairman Brooks had brought forth an idea that instead of, uh, just the three of us, the three boards, uh, that we needed to generate a committee of approximately fifteen or twenty people in various forms to do different tasks. He assigned, uh, two, two of his members, Nigel and, um, and George, to be the point people, uh, for the three groups, uh, being two from here, two from planning, and two from, uh.
EDA.
EDA. And, um, so at this point in time, we're looking for two people from the board.
I'll volunteer.
I'll be volunteering here anyways.
At least it looks, appears like I'm.
Like you have, you're making a decision.
Am I volunteering or am I being tapped? I felt so.
Volunteer, volunteer.
It's called voluntold.
Y'all, y'all have been involved in all of it the whole time, and it would make sense then is having y'all as the two members, uh, do it, so. Any other help need? Okay. Uh, can I get a motion then to appoint, uh, Lee and Jim? I will make the motion.
No, well, I was waiting on crowd.
Alright, I'll, uh, motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I've only heard three of us all opposed. Ayes have it.
Quiet aye, I guess.
Quiet aye.
Oh, don't act like, don't be coy, we know you're inside, your stomach is doing flips.
Okay, next would be the proposed alternative connector road, Supervisor Frank.
Go ahead. The, uh, Julie and Jim and I met with, uh, uh, representatives of Spotsylvania, uh, county, uh, yesterday.
Yesterday morning, yeah.
Yesterday morning. Um. They have, uh, they did a presentation, you got those slides?
Uh.
That's alright.
It's not a, it's not repression.
Okay, uh, they came on with, uh, a lot of their rationale for doing this, uh. They're basically trying to provide long-term solutions to the Fredericksburg area. Relief on the congestion to Route Three interchange, proved capacity of ninety-five over the river. Uh, provide relief to the congestion on Route Seventeen interchange, and funnel traffic away from the choke points, which is I ninety-five. They talk about a bypass. Well, the only part of the bypass they've even considered is that it comes from the north and comes up and stops at Route Twen- uh, Route Three. And so, uh, this is not a plan that's, uh, uh, got a lot of, uh, uh, very complete. They, they put a, uh, uh, the segment from the Rapidant to Route Three in Orange County, pretty much no show. There, there's no, there's no rationale besides where that's located, other than it's just a line drawn, drawn in there. They've, uh, got a lot of, uh, uh, rationales, I think, that, uh, that, that they want. They have a segment, the upper segment of that, and I think if, if you've got the slides, there's one that shows where the, where the upper segment is. But that's something that's, uh, already in the comp plan in this, in the, uh, in Stafford County. And it's, uh.
It's called something like the Barra Parkway.
Yeah, the Barra Parkway.
It runs from the exit where the Stafford Airport is on ninety-five to, to where the Mary Washington Satellite operation is on.
If you got a map over there, yeah.
It's the red, it's the red section.
It's the red, it's the red segment, yeah.
And that's something that's in their plan, and that's, that's a go-ahead, uh, for them, because they wanted to get to their, uh, industrial park and their airport. So that's something Stafford County wants to do, and they're supporting that, uh, and financially, I think, as well. Whether that gets extended through all the rest of that, uh, is, and I don't even call this a plan, I consult it more of a concept. And they have, uh, uh, support from the Spotsylvania County Board and the, uh, and the Culpeper County Board, to conduct a, uh, study.
And Stafford apparently, isn't it?
And Stafford has bought in on it as well. And so they're asking Orange County if we would have a resolution in support of a study. Uh, that doesn't mean that this is the first stage of planning. Uh, there's a couple of, uh, other possibilities, that doesn't necessarily need to go through Orange County. It could go into Route Three on the Spotsylvania side of the river. Or, uh, another possibility is, if they wanna go to Culpeper, go all the way around and, uh, through Culpeper County to Culpeper. There's a couple of other, other things. Uh, so, uh, I think that, uh, I guess I would make a recommendation that we participate in the study. Uh, mainly because if we're not at the table, uh, we don't have anything to say about it.
Well, one of the, one of the questions I have, and because, well, you all are giving us the information now, and I, and I greatly appreciate it, but we've actually, the most information that I've received about it has been from reading the Freelance Star, and, which is unfortunate, cause I don't, I don't, wasn't there, don't know, um, can't, but anyway, in the paper, it's saying that they also want a commitment from us to fund this study, and that are we, you know, willing to, to give some money towards it, so, I, I'm with you, I will, I, I'm, I agree with you that being at the table is better than, than not, but with the big stipulation that if we're gonna be giving any money to somebody, it's not gonna be to that, it would obviously be somewhere else, and making it very, very clear from the get-go that Orange County taxpayers are not.
They did not, the, the request was not for us to, uh, us to fund this, the request for us to pass a resolution in support of the study.
Yeah, d- uh, one more little piece of background, th- there, this has been going on for quite some time, there's a, there's an organization called FAMPo, F-A-M-P-o, which is Frederickburg area planning, Metropolitan Planning Organization, or something like that, and one of their things they deal with are roads, there's been a plan on the table for many years to do a leg coming off of ninety-five, uh, and, and dumping out, you know where that, uh, Home Depot is there at Harrison Crossing and so forth? Well, they've realized as time passes, that, that doesn't get them anywhere, and so they're looking for a, a little wider loop, that's, that's sort of the back. So there's, there's, there is money apparently in the Commonwealth Transportation Board's budget, uh, to study these routes and do some things. So I, I, I think they've at least in part, uh, answered some of the funding questions, so, cause it, cause this is a, an alternative to something that's been in the hopper for quite a while.
And by, and by the, the multi-county support of the, of the study, has a better, uh, chance of getting out the money from the Congress, from the C T B.
Right, and that's one of the reasons they're interested in, in all the surrounding counties.
But if you, but if you look at this thing, and you come and clear out here, and they don't have anything for coming back down here, and I'm not sure that the traffic would ever get so bad, that you'd wanna go fifteen miles to the west and then fifteen miles back to the east.
Driving in really bad traffic back that way.
Now, the, the biggest problem you have is the interchanges at Fredericksburg, because you come there at four o'clock at night, and it's a parking lot.
That's right, and, and, uh, part of this.
Or, or all weekend.
Yeah, part of the, part of this, uh, uh, I see, uh, as, as opposed to being a bypass, probably provides a different route for people who would otherwise come out Route Three, they come down this way.
The seventy percent of our citizens that live on the east end of the county that drive to DC to go to work, and drive through Route Three and ninety-five.
I know, I, I did that for a cup, for a year, so, that, uh, you know, that is another possibility. There's some, uh, potential for it to contribute to, uh, whatever we would do here in, in the, uh, Route Three initiative. I mean, you know, these are all things that, uh, would, would have to be studied, and we'd have to look at this in con- in conjunction with what, everything we've done just in this previous, uh, uh, previous motion we had, so, I mean, this is, uh, this is all, uh, uh, you know, very conceptual. Uh, and, uh, any, any road, uh, that comes through Orange County is gonna have to have Orange County buying in on it. Uh, if they move it to, if they decide we don't wanna participate, and they move it into, uh, into, uh, Spotsylvania County, it's still flowing into us anyway, and whether it's ten yards on the east side or the west side of Wilderness Run makes a difference. It's, we're gonna. Yeah, I mean, so. They're gonna get us. So, but there's, there's an awful lot to be understood, I don't know how much traffic they're going to have, I don't, uh, has anybody done any, uh, analysis of all of this? So, uh, I think that the, the study has to address many of those questions, and part of it, uh, if, uh, if we are participating in the study, at least we can make sure that the questions get answered, that would, uh, that would support any decision that Orange County would want to make with regard to actual participation in a bypass. So they were asking for a resolution of, uh, support.
Well, I have a motion for that in a day.
Uh, do we need to dra- draft a resolution? I mean, I'm not sure what we need.
I'm assuming they're gonna want a written resolution.
So, uh, why don't we ask our.
A mo- a motion to have our legal team over here draft us a resolution.
But, but to be very clear, cause I'm reading something on the, that back page, a resolution from the board that states there is interest, and that the board supports the further study, making sure the word interest and support goes towards the study, and not interest and support towards the project, making it, making it abundantly clear, and I would like, again, and I know it may sound stupid and redundant,
Towards the project. Sure. Sure. I mean, that's.
But I would like it made very clear that the taxpayers of Orange County are not committing to funding any part of, there's no commitment at this time to fund any part of, um, this venture, please.
I got it.
We can also check out what Culpeper passed.
Well, that's when, the first thing I'm gonna do is see what the other jurisdictions are.
Yeah, they, they have one that went.
Alright. Okay, I would make a motion that we ask the, uh, county attorney to, uh, draft a resolution.
I'll second that motion. Mind that it has.
I got it.
You rock.
I think you got that message.
I'm, I'm just making it clear, again.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, we wanted the information items.
I have one, was VDOT ever given the request to look at the intersection of Spicer's Mill Road and Monford Road that I had emailed you about that dangerous intersection?
But the, the signs that say stop sign ahead or dangerous intersection ahead, or something like that.
Well, just something, because there have been, um, were they, were they given that information that I passed along?
Did you send it by email?
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't we?
Can you please follow up, cause I don't see it on here, so it doesn't even look like it's on their radar.
Okay.
When are, when are they coming to meetings anymore?
They're now coming, it's October.
Once a month, once every other month, once a quarter, never.
January eighth or July and October, I think, they are scheduled for their frequency change to be here next meeting.
And that'll change in a week.
Right, right, so they'll come seven, the, the twenty-fourth, and then theoretically again in October.
Could get back on there.
And then it'll be quarterly.
Okay. Alright, any questions on the information items? Committee reports. Okay, go to calendar then, uh, for the, for the meeting of the board, EDA, and the planning commission, except for the twenty-fourth. I had a request that we change that date.
Yes, sir, and the, um, the, th- there's a number of things going on in those months, we can also offer up the first of October as a date. Um, if we wanted to go into November, I know that there's some, some worry that there'll be a loss of momentum. So, we have the twenty-fourth, we have the, the first, and then if y'all would like us to go into November, we can move it as well.
I'd like for it to be moved to November seventh, if at all possible. Several of us have, um, a ve- very busy month of October ahead of us.
Is there a planning?
Really?
Well, you know, you, it's pumpkin carving time, and, um, apple bobbing, and all of those. Jonathan has to dress up, I mean, there's just so many things for us to do.
Halloween, yeah, the, cr- cr- tricking.
Trick or treating.
So there's a, a planning commission meeting already that day, um, I believe, are we doing any public hearings that day already, for November seventh?
No, nothing I'm aware of.
Okay, so would you wanna just replace that meeting with a, a joint meeting, or?
Well, we know it's convenient for that group.
Mm-hmm.
Well, the big, biggest worry, of course, is letting it go too long.
That's why I think November seventh is, is, it's great.
Well, that's why I think October first is better.
We have a lot going on to you.
I know, been there, done that twice. But we, we had it said, you asked for an alternative, so I put it out there to see if there was an alternative.
When were we due to do it?
The twenty-fourth of October, so it's, it's a week and a half, two weeks.
I'd rather.
And then all, and that actually allows the steering team time to get together.
Okay, if we, we can get the steering team together before that, then.
The steering team could actually meet the first, you know, this, the end of September, first part of November, and then we could meet on November seventh.
When, uh, when does the EDA meet so that they can?
The twenty-fifth of September.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
So should we set up a, if we, if we do this in November, should we set up a, uh, a, uh, or the, uh, October first, set up the, uh, the steering meeting?
That would work.
Could do that.
Uh, as long as the other members can, have you talked to anybody in?
No, sir, we didn't wanna get people excited or unexcited about a date and then change it, um.
Alright, well, as it is, um, we have a date of the twenty-fourth set that everybody agreed to already, correct?
Pardon?
We have a date of the twenty-fourth that everybody had already agreed to.
We already scheduled that?
No, that hasn't been all agreed to either, cause we didn't wanna get everybody excited about a date and then, um.
Okay.
It's, it's been bannered about, but it hasn't been, um, people haven't signed up, and.
So why don't we propose that the steering team either meet October first or the twenty-fourth, and then we collectively all meet on November seventh?
Okay, I, I can do all those, you good with those, either of those, Lee? I can do that, I can take October fourth, or, uh, twenty-fourth to meet, let, we'll, we'll go ahead and, and try October first, I mean.
It's the, the first. Okay.
Uh, and the sooner the better, I think, because if we wanna start handing out any, uh, taskings or anything like that, okay.
Alright.
Does that date work with Stafford?
Okay.
Yeah.
Get sphere.
And what time would you like that to be?
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, it's fine. Okay.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Uh.
And so the seventh then would be the, uh, joint, uh, joint meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
We need to check the airports availability, but we can, um, do that and go to a different place if need be.
Okay, alright.
Okay.
So is the seventh?
The joint meeting?
The joint meeting?
The seventh is the joint meeting, and we're gonna also have a steering committee meeting on the first or the twenty-fourth.
Of October.
Of October. So we've added a meeting.
What?
It's a minute.
Yeah. So hold on your calendar, the first, the twenty-fourth of October, and then the seventh of November.
Be careful what you're asked for.
Yeah, I know.
You could, you could potentially cancel it if you want, yeah.
Okay. That's done, then, uh, we have nothing left to do except for a closed meeting.
Alright.
And one thing at seven o'clock, we should come back to all.
Alright.
And then we do our work session.
Yeah, we're just getting started.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, and whereas pursuant to section two point two, thirty-seven eleven eighty-seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County does hereby authorize discussion of the aforementioned matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm very enclosed. Here you go. Okay. If I could get you to read the.
Alright.
Appropriate paperwork, sir.
To the best of your knowledge, where the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, need a roll call.
Mr. Wilsons? Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Mrs. Zas?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
And Mr. Goodman?
Aye. Okay, uh, move back to our regular agenda, item seven B, the borrowing resolutions for the RRCSB, Brian Duncan. I understand Mr. Duncan, from before, I missed that, but we had a pretty good layer of what we had, and you had some additional information for us.
I provided some additional information, which is probably part of your information, uh, we, uh, Mr. Frame joined us on a tour of some local programs, had some good questions for us, and, uh, your three appointees joined me here again today, uh, my original presentation on twenty-third, we had quite a conversation in here, a, a good discussion about these resolutions and our capital plans, and so they're back on your docket this evening for vote. I'm, I'm certainly here to review any of the new information, and also address any questions that y'all may have about these.
Okay.
Uh, I did tour the, uh, the facilities. Obviously, the, uh, the one here in Orange, the, uh, uh, mental health facility, uh, they're pretty cramped in there. Uh, I was concerned, asked a lot of questions about, uh, moving it, uh, out of Orange, and what the impact would be. There are people who walk to the clinic, uh, most of them are driving, most of them, uh, are taking public transportation or other forms. But, uh, there would be an impact, there's no doubt that there would be an impact. Uh, however, there are advantages, uh, to moving it in terms of, uh, better service. The, uh, we've got so few people there, that if somebody's sick, uh, you lose a whole day's worth of appointments. Uh, and in the, in the, uh, larger facility at, uh, Culpeper, you would have, uh, a broader base of, uh, of service providers, so that, uh, if you did have somebody, uh, have to, uh, unexpectedly, uh, out of, uh, unable to be there, you have some more flexibility in terms of, of managing your staff. Uh, you can have, uh, more than one psychiatrist there at a time, I mean, there's a, there's a variety of things that, that go with this. The, uh, uh, if we wanted to, uh, if we wanted to try to keep this facility, I think the county would have to make some investment. Uh, because the, I'm, uh, I was pretty much convinced that, that their investment is, is gonna go, try to go into the Culpeper facility, where they're consolidating, how many, was it, three different, uh, facilities?
Yes, sir.
Uh, into that one, into that one facility, thereby giving you a broad, a broader depth of, uh, of service. I would suggest that we need to go ahead and, uh, and provide them the resolutions, but I'd be, uh, open to any questions. Based on the, uh, experience we had in, uh, helping the nursing home fund a project and.
experience we had in, uh, helping the nursing home fund a project and seeing that debt get countered against the county. Is there any research been done as to how this would be treated from the county's perspective?
Well, that debt isn't counted towards the county, it's included in our number.
Because it, it- Yeah.
But because we have the escrow account and all of that, the, the bonding agencies and auditors don't technically count that towards our debt.
But it's, but it's counted when it comes to calculating our ratios and, and, and that's my, and, and it is not a liability of the county, any more than this would be directly.
That's right.
Uh, it, it, it is a revenue bond.
But this is not a bond that we are, we are not the-
That's right.
It's not a bond at all, I don't think, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a rule, an RDA loan?
Yeah, it's not a bond.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Well, but it's still borrowed, I, I mean, it's just one of the thoughts that I, 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 do we know, I guess is my question.
Well, we're not borrowing the money, in the case of the, uh, of the, uh, nursing home.
We were a signatory on the-
We are the signatory of the loan, we're not a signatory on this loan.
Okay, I, I'm, my question was, I don't know.
Okay.
My, I guess the, the answer is, I have not asked that, I have an assumption, but I haven't asked that.
Other than-
And I'm, I'm happy to ask that.
Other than where we've said that in the, uh, uh, in our resolution, Tom, do you have any more to offer on that?
Well, I think the resolution spells out that we're not accepting it as an obligation, or nor is anyone looking to the county as obligor on it, and so I, I think the resolution addresses the concern.
And it says that with the nursing home as well.
Except that we signed, my understanding is we, we actually were a party on the nursing-
Through the bond.
To the bond.
Well, through the EDA, and because part of the money went to the courthouse, yeah, but, but they're really separate.
They are, but it was a consolidation of note.
But, but to answer the accounting question, I don't know the answer to the accounting question, whether, we might need Linda for that question, whether, on, on the accounting side, the-
And if the-
I can make a quick phone call if you want, yes.
Well, we made such a big deal about our ratios that it-
'Cause what I'm saying only has to do with the legal obligation.
I understand, yeah, in my, my-
On the accounting side, I'm not sure what the answer would be.
I'll make a quick phone call, she'll, she'll be on.
Do you have, uh, currently have any obligations?
Oh, yes, uh, y'all approved, and we did the borrowing resolution for the Boxwood Recovery Centers, four point two million dollars.
So you have, you already have obligations, which are not reflected in our numbers.
We have several. Yeah, we have several already, as a matter of fact.
Are they through RDA, any of them through RDA?
Yes, they are, they're both through.
So that probably is the answer.
That's correct, oh, yeah.
Good thinking there, Lee.
Yeah.
Good question.
Okay. Any other questions? That gives over for a motion.
I would make a motion to adopt the two borrowing resolutions as attached.
Okay, I have a motion, I have a second. Last second, okay, through, any further discussion? In that case, uh, two roll call.
Mrs. Zadd?
Uh.
Mr. Goodman?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll keep you updated.
Okay.
You guys are doing good work over there.
I really appreciate your time, thank you.
That concludes the, part of the regular meeting, that will take us on to the work sessions or the cop plan. And, so you wanted a few minutes?
Yeah.
To re-line, okay, so we'll recess for ten. Back into session.
All right, good evening, I put, I put together a brief slide overview, uh, for y'all's benefit, uh, to consider with the conference of plan.
Yours.
The, uh, planning commission, uh, gave a positive recommendation on August first, first, uh, with a vote of four to one. And just to give you a brief history, the, uh, Board Supervisors tasked, uh, PC to undertake a revision of the conference plan in twenty-ten. Staff initially edited the existing, uh, conference plan, removing redundancies, future build-out scenarios, revising goals, objectives, and strategies, and updating demographic information. Staff added stronger language for trail planning, agricultural tourism, and the go, goals, objectives, and strategy section. And the current future land use language contained in the current draft as a result of division policy efforts spanning over half of the twenty-twelve calendar year. The conference plan update discussions were placed on nearly every PC agenda since early twenty-eleven. Joint meetings between the board and the planning commission were held on two occasions, February third, twenty-eleven, and June twenty-first, twenty-twelve, to discuss the CP process and other long-range planning matters. A public comment session was held, um, on October fourth, twenty-twelve regarding the CP, and that was initiated by the planning commission. And two public hearings were held by the planning commission, the first was May second, twenty-thirteen, and August first, twenty-thirteen. At the former, the PC directed staff to make changes based on public comment. It was at the latter hearing where the planning commission recommended approval of the current conference draft by a vote of four to one. I wanted to give you a brief land use data overlay, uh, based on the available twenty-thirteen record data containing both parcel and acreage information. It's thirteen thousand nine hundred and three parcels, representing two hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and ninety-eight acres. The following data was incorporated into the conference of plan draft. With regards to acreages, approximately nine point six percent of the total acreage is contained on parcels less than six acres. Approximately ten point two percent of the total acreage is contained on parcels between six and nineteen point nine three acres. Approximately eighty percent of the total acreage in the county is contained on parcels greater than twenty acres. Now, with regards to the parcel data, uh, approximately twenty-one percent of parcels are less than one acre. Approximately fifty percent of the parcels are between one and five point nine nine eight acres. And approximately fifteen percent of the parcels are between six and nineteen point nine three acres. And lastly, approximately fourteen percent of the parcels are greater than twenty acres. Uh, approximately sixty-six thousand twenty-eight acres in the county are enrolled in the agricultural land use taxation program. Nearly thirty-four thousand acres are used for harvested cropland. Uh, hundred and thirty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety acres, six, sixty-two point nine percent of the total are in public and private forest. Tax records indicate that forty-seven thousand and twenty acres of these forests are in land use taxation. Approximately fifteen percent of the county land area are under, uh, historic or conservation easements. With regards to demographics, um, our population has indeed increased by twenty-nine percent between twenty, uh, two thousand, two thousand and ten. You can see there's an increase toward the elderly population, well, I shouldn't say elderly, 'cause I'm still in the forty-five to fifty-nine range. So a, anything above the fifty-nine years, there's been a, a, an increase between two thousand, two thousand and ten. Uh, with regards to housing and the permits issued, uh, that's rather self-explanatory, we've seen a rate of change of twenty-eight percent, uh, for the total housing units, an increase. I think it's worthy to note that there are approximately forty-two point nine, uh, there's a rate of change, uh, vacant households between two thousand and two thousand and ten. You can look at some of the other data, but I do wanna point out, uh, to me that was a very telling, um, statistical graph, is the dwelling unit, uh, building permits issued between two thousand and two thousand and twelve. It shows a precipitous drop at the height of the building, uh, boom in the mid-two thousands, and then it just dropped, I mean, just tremendously. We're starting to see a slight rebound, and I should point out that with the two thousand and twelve figure for, uh, well, toward the end of two thousand and twelve, that hundred and seventy-nine is only increased because that was when a hundred building permits were issued for Roundhill in the town of Orange. Uh, I wanna give you an example, some of the maps that, uh, we created, this one in particular was from the, uh, RRRC. It shows the population density for twenty-ten. Um, the two thousand, we also have a two thousand map that shows basically the same scattering of, of population density. I do wanna point out that over on the eastern side of the county, a large part of the development that occurred, uh, between two thousand and two thousand and ten was in the Wilderness Shores and the Somerset Ridge, um, areas. Um, this is a, to allude to an earlier point I'd made with the land use map categories, this came out of our division policy, uh, discussion in twenty-twelve. Uh, and what we did, we, we went through several permutations of what the land use categories are, and we heard a lot from the community at our October fourth public, uh, comment period. Um, a lot of the, um, citizens who spoke that evening had a real, uh, serious issue with the term neighborhood residential, which is what A two is, and I think we tweaked it somewhat, the planning commission did. And so we have kind of a purpose statement and then the definition. Uh, we have six categories, agricultural one, agricultural two, village, town suburban, economic development, and potential economic development. And I can leave this up here, if y'all'd like to glance over that a little bit. Plus gives me a chance to have some water.
No big surprise here, Greg, we've already read all this, buddy.
Okay, good deal, then I could just kick, thank you supervisor, I could kick right on.
I'm just, just, you know, moving along, you can drink and, and-
Oh, don't tell me that, drink water, yeah, you need to say that.
And hit the buttons.
Um.
Yeah, don't drink and drive.
This is our, uh, what came out of the planning commission's recommendation, our future land use map. You'll notice the difference between this map and the, uh, existing, uh, conference of plan map, future land use map. And I put these together so you can kinda see the, some of the slight changes. The blue represents the village areas, the, uh, the planning commission identified. You'll see these spots of green, and, uh, staff felt it was appropriate to include those areas that were added as conservation easements, uh, between two thousand and two thousand, well, in the present. We also, uh, added this area in twenty-seven and twenty-eight as the A one district, because in the previous iteration, it had been just agricultural. And, 'cause there's a lot of discussion about how far out to the east that we wanted to see activity, development activity occur. We also identified some areas that were, uh, planning commission thought was suitable for potential economic development, as well as the existing economic development opportunities. Aerojet facility was labeled as, uh, potentially economic development, and then we have as well some potentially economic development areas along Route Three corridor. Um, the Lake of the Woods area and north of that is identified as town suburban residential, we wanted to look at the areas that, uh, had existing infrastructure. And that's it, so if I'll take any questions, if y'all have any.
So anybody have questions for Greg?
I'm sure some will come up as we talk through it, but I don't have any. Unless you can answer the question about the vision statement that I posed to you, which was that the, at some point in this nearly two-year-long process that I've been involved with, there, there was a discussion about, uh, using the vision statement that the Board of Supervisors approved back in two thousand and ten, I think it was. And, and the vision statement that's in here is the one that was approved in two thousand and ten. And, uh, uh, I believe October, October nineteenth of two thousand and ten. And so, uh, we, we probably should label it as such, because the planning commission talked about whether or not to open up that discussion again to rewrite the vision statement and decided not to open it up and stay with the previously board-approved statement, which is the one that, that's in here. Does that match with your
Yes, sir.
understanding, Greg, okay.
Yeah. I think, yeah, it was October nineteenth, is that, is that what you said? Okay, that's correct.
I, I mentioned that partly 'cause it's on every page, as you, as you saw as you were going through here, so.
I'm starting to sweat a little bit, okay.
How do you wish to proceed?
Well, if you have questions or if there are things we wanna do to it.
Start on page one, I guess.
Yeah, that's probably as-
Yeah, we can probably go to page, uh, uh, seven, we don't need to do with the index, the acknowledgements.
Well, there, there's a, I found a couple of different kinds of things, it's probably everybody, there, there's a few places where a little bit of editing needs to take place, 'cause there's a comma where there shouldn't be, or there's two words when there should be one, or that kinda stuff. I mean, we can, we can talk about all those, those, if you want, or we, or there's a couple of more substantive things to discuss as well, so. On, on how you wanna handle the, the nits and nats, I guess, is the-
We all need to discuss. Comments, you, you can, if you need a comment someplace, I think you can address that with Greg. I guess, is, if there's any thing of substance that we wanna change, that's what we need to discuss. That's, um, grammar.
Well, one, one of the, uh, let me give you an example of one of, of substance that I have in, in my mind, and it's a good time to do it, since it's, it's a little out orders, not all big and one league, but it, since he has the maps up there. Uh, the, the planning commission made several, uh, iterations of defining the, the land use categories, and, uh, as far as economic development's concerned, they settled on two, one called economic development, one called potential economic development. That potential economic development occurred because there was a contemplation of, uh, uh, commercial development at various spots along Route twenty between essentially be, uh, the, the, the part, uh, east of, of five twenty-two, I guess that's, did, did run closer to the town as well. A, as a result of further discussions and public hearings and things like that, they, they collapsed a lot of that from the map. The category is still listed, but if you read it really carefully, it, it sorta has no meaning left. And so I'm thinking that we might want to, uh, go back to just an economic development category and not have that potential and sitting there, because I, I read it several times trying to associate something with it, and you, and you can't now.
Well, answer this question for me, what does potential mean?
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed, a, and so that-
That's actually one of my notes.
Yeah, that, that's one of the ones that I think we should sort of decide what we wanna do with it, and give, give Greg some, some, some thoughts or guidance, whatever.
I notice though, we do have land on the land use map that shows as potential.
And, and most of those meet the definition of economic development without potential. The Aerojet one is, is the one outstanding, uh, one there, that, I'm not sure what to do with that, I mean, it's a, that's a closed community with a fence around it and-
You're not welcome.
And I'm not welcome.
They have two hundred acres, they're selling off though.
Yeah, I, I, as I say, I don't know what to do with it, it's sort of-
I, I, I've visited it.
Yeah. I've driven by it, uh, it, it-
They, they make things that I used to use in my last life.
As we heard earlier, they make noise too, so.
There's a whole lot of things in Orange County that make noise, but that doesn't mean we're putting a red square around it, calling it economic development.
Well, uh, let, let me go back to, my, my narrow comment deals with that, the, the need for that category called potential economic development. And I think, I think we've reached a point, all other things considered, probably is unnecessary, or, or doesn't really add to the discussion.
I, I concur with you.
We just need to change the math then to reflect.
We'll need to make some adjustments in, in several things to accommodate that, but I think there are-
I don't have a problem with that.
Hey, Greg, you, you have a rebuttal, you, you, you heard the discussion as I did.
Well, um, what, what I hear is movement toward removing the, that designation on the map as well as in the table. And to feed off of that, would you, does the board wish to convert those that were labeled as potential, I'll just use my proper posture. Um, would the board prefer that I use, uh, convert the potential economic development to economic development areas?
Everything's economic development.
Okay.
Everything that's orange goes to red.
It becomes a one category.
It's either, yeah.
Okay, I've got that down there, okay.
And instead of two shades of ruse, you have only one.
All right, but back to this, are we going one at a time, or are we going?
Well, you just did.
I know, I'm, I'm trying to get a little, um, structure, yes.
If I may, the planning commission ultimately settled on a system that seemed to work pretty quickly. And that is the chairman just went through the pages, and then the first page that somebody hit, they had a comment, like, so if page seven was the first page somebody commented, they just chimed in, and, and that seemed to be the system they settled on of all the things they tried, and it seemed to be the most efficient, was just running through the pages.
That's fine, we'd make-
That sounds good, so we're skipping the very beginning then, and then on page seven.
I would actually start out with something different, not that it's bad, but I actually would move the vision statement first, because that is what you're trying to accomplish, and that's with everything behind it, so the vision- Because that is what you're trying to accomplish and that's what everything behind it, so the vision, I, and this is there can be some things, but very, the first, first thing should be the vision statement, should be first.
F on page ten.
Well, some of the versions had a page that, the, uh, right after the acknowledgements, that the only thing on it was the vision statement.
I, I like that.
Yeah, I think you can do that, I, I would repeat it on, on page ten and, and I'll tell you why in a minute.
Well, I, I'm with you there, but I think the very first thing someone should see when, when they open it up is the vision statement.
So just, uh, have that box right above the picture, right below the picture?
No, new page.
It's a, it's, it's a page, the very, you know, after acknowledgements and your, your, um, you know, page seven would actually be the, um, vision statement.
Okay.
There, there's a model in the, a couple of previous versions.
Two thousand and nine, okay.
Okay, well, with that then, anything on page seven? Eight?
Yes. I have lots, um, starting off with the Orange County Comprehensive Plan. Well, first of all, it's, it's a rewording of it because it's not very well written. Um, Orange County Comprehensive Plan is the official policy guide for the land use decisions in the county. As a policy document, it is to be used to communicate the preferred use of land in designated areas for achieving the vision of the county. Within the land use, I can give you all this Greg, but within the land use context. It is a tool that can be used by, you know, counties elected official staff, citizens, blah, 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 to evaluate various land use options and development proposals for compatibility, suitability, as well as sustainability. Period.
That's a whole new first paragraph.
It's a whole new first paragraph and it just, it's, I just personally think it's better written. And if we're gonna keep saying over and over in this document pursuant to Virginia law, this is a guide for the county, but it's not to be construed as creating any binding legal duties, I mean, we already, it's a little, come on. I know why it's in there, but it doesn't have to, we don't have to keep saying, this is just a guide, this is just a guide, this is just a guide. Because we know it's just a guide, I don't, I don't.
I would disagree, there are those out there who would tell you it's a bible, not just a guide.
Well, there's, then, then put it underneath the statutory authority. Um, so that's that.
Well, I, I, with, with your rewrite of the first paragraph, I would delete the second paragraph.
As would I.
Because it's simply a, a, a not very well representation of what's on the previous page that's in the code.
Yeah, I was sort of wondering how we were going to, uh, promote the morals of the county, but, uh, I understand that that's.
The code says you have to.
Statutorily required to do it, so.
Yeah, I would, I agree with Jim, I'd get rid of the second paragraph. Then in the third paragraph, um, I have all of that until you get down to the bottom where it's in the third paragraph, it says, "The plan describes the major priorities related to the future land use that contribute to achieving our vision." Priorities such as protecting historical areas and natural resources, preserving our prime farmlands, supporting private enterprise, which will expand our local economy to create jobs and revenues, to retain the character of our communities and meet the requirements for public facilities. Because I have a question that says, how do we expand the economy? To me, it sounds like bigger government and shouldn't we, um, support private enterprise? Because we as government, the only jobs we create are the ones that the taxpayers pay for. So supporting our private industry is actually what increases our local economy, that actually is a net benefit.
Read that, read that again.
All right, just basically, it's, the paragraph is the same, but it, it goes.
After twenty years.
Af- yeah, and it says, "The paragraph describes the major blah, 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 blah." It says, "Priorities such as protecting historical areas and natural resources, preserving our prime farmlands, and supporting private enterprise, which will expand our local economy to create jobs and revenues, retain the character of our communities, and meet the requirement for public facilities." Basically, the big thing is, I'm, I'm changing, expanding the economy to create jobs and revenues and retaining and improvement. When you say expanding the economy, what economy do you mean? Do you mean the, the, the ones that the taxpayers, you know, expand? The only jobs we create are county positions, but what we need to do is actually support private enterprise.
Yeah, I think that's intent, so I, 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 I think your words are fine, and you, you changed the tense so that it all matches up, so I think you're.
That's fine.
I, I, I'm fine with that.
Greg, I'll give you this stuff.
Thank you, okay.
You're welcome. Um, I have a question in the next paragraph. By accurately documenting these current conditions, the county can form a useful baseline for future planning. Are you really sure we're accurately documenting? Because I don't believe you are. I believe in the next page, on page eleven, you are not, while you are encapsulating, um, the parcel sizes, um, to, to use an example, Round Hill Meadows, how many homes has that been rezoned for? The town of Orange just recently upzoned all of their parcels, so available lots are not actually incorporated. We have several rezoned parcels, while it may be two hundred acres, it's actually zoned for multiple parcels, it may be one large parcel right now. So I don't know that, um, we are accurately documenting. I might say we're documenting to the best of our ability, but I don't believe that we're accurately documenting. And that's just, I, in one of these versions, I actually have the notes of all of the places that, um, we got Lake of the Woods.
So why don't we scratch accurately?
Yeah.
Well, documenting these current conditions, and we're, I mean, that, that gets rid of the, the, because we're doing this at a point in time and things are always changing.
So remove accurately.
Just delete accurately.
Okay.
And probably get rid of current. Because the document, the information's only as good as the date that you put it in there.
Well, I, I, I realize that, but I think we're talking about, you know, we're not documenting history.
You, you can only document what you have to do to future, so.
I know, I know, but we're, but that's a funny thing, we're not, we're not actually even really documenting what we have on the books. Just saying. But anyway, so that's page eight for me.
Anything else on eight?
Uh, since we deleted that other paragraph, I don't have to worry about, uh, morals anymore, I just left the state worry about it.
All right, anything on page nine?
Yes.
Yeah, I got, go ahead, I got two small things.
Um, in addition to being a tool to aid in judging land use proposal, this section serves to communicate the expectations and preferences of the county. I have a question, what are we communicating? I mean, I, I don't even see, not to be funny, and I guess that's an ideological question that I'm asking right now, but what are we, what is it that we're communicating?
Well, I, I, I think if you look at that map, you get one set of communications, which is there, there are areas that we want to define as having certain characteristics and not changing those, there are areas that have other characteristics that, uh, such as the economic development at the other extreme, where we, things, we expect things to happen. I think that's what, that, that was the intention there.
Right, I know what the intention is, but at the same time, we have several thousands, and, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but I'm saying we have several thousand contiguous, raw acres that are in what is the A two area, several hundreds, I'm sorry, contiguous, that is raw land. But it's in an, an area that when we get to that definition is, I mean, faced upon the definition in here, it's, you know, pockets of rel- relatively concentrated residential development, you know, you know what it says, and I'm not gonna read it. But, so what is it that we're, I, I mean, and it's just an ideological question, I, I don't know that, I don't know where. I, I don't know what the message is that's being sent, but that's just an ideological question.
Well, I think that, I mean, we're talking about this plan as in general, and we're saying if you look through this plan as opposed to a blank slate, you've got some expectations and preferences that we're, we're establishing. I mean, I realize that, you know, we could, we could argue about ex, the details of it, but we're talking about the plan as a whole.
I agree.
Okay, um.
Uh, I have a, a question in the next paragraph.
I actually would get rid of it, that's my note.
Well, uh, when we talk about the related public facilities, describes the level of service. Uh, as I look through the rest of it, I don't think we're describing the level of service. In the thing of, uh, I mean, when we talk about a level of service, we're saying, okay, uh, you know, uh, uh, we would have a, uh, a library within twenty minutes, within an hour, uh, you know, uh, there would, uh, and it would be available, uh, you know, you know, not necessarily describing the hours, but some, some in degree of what, what the level of service is. And I think that the library associations have a level of service. We have defined one level of service, uh, and we've talked about the rescue, uh, emergency services of responding to eighty percent of the calls within fifteen minutes, that's what I would call a level of service. But I don't think we have that in all of the areas of service that we have. And, uh, uh, I'm not sure that I can get into this thing, well, how close can I be to a waste collection site or, uh, you know, so. In, in some areas, we may want to begin to define levels of service, but I don't think we've done it.
Yeah, it's mostly just location of facilities, frankly, that are out there now.
That's right, describes the location of various components.
Areas of service.
Yeah, but I, I.
It's really just facilities, I think, it's fair to say.
Yeah.
So am I hearing to strike the level of service and?
I'd say it describes the location of various components of existing public resources.
I'm with you on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna do that. Okay.
Okay.
How much, it just defines what it is.
So you got rid of levels of service and?
Yeah, I mean, we may in, in some point, uh, because I think there's some other places where we say, we should do this. Uh, and maybe we wanna keep that, but this one says, we've already done it and that we ain't.
Okay. Anything else on nine?
Yes, I'd get rid of paragraph D, that is, I, I mean, that's like saying, well, it just.
Yeah, I agree with you.
All goals and objectives should be read in conjunction with and interpreted to achieve the vision. I mean.
And, and that language has been in the last three or four versions of it, I don't know, I, I agree with you, I don't.
I, I like the last part. Any, uh, doubt or ambiguity should be resolved and fade of that alternative which is most consistent with and likely to achieve the vision.
I mean, read the vision, the whole paragraph needs to go because anybody can make that vision pertain to, uh, you know, man, it's gonna improve my quality of life, therefore that strip club needs to be built right here because I'm gonna, um, you know.
Yeah.
I, I disagree, I'd leave alone.
The whole paragraph needs to go, it's not, it's. It, it's because I said so, is actually what it says. It's just because I said so.
I would keep it, but, uh, I'm not gonna fall on my sword if somebody wants to delete it, I don't have any strength.
It needs a little bit of editing, I think that there, I couldn't figure out whether those two commas in the second line are in the right place or even needed, I think they're.
I don't think you need the commas.
Yeah, I thi- and, and after the word objective in the fourth line, you don't need of the county, I think, or objective in this comprehensive plan.
Hmm, I don't know, because it ta- it takes two different action verbs and.
Yeah, it, it.
I need my English teacher.
Yeah, I know.
Well, actually you do, because, um, sustaining the rural character, we haven't even defined what rural character is. So, um, until you can define what rural character is, you don't really know how to interpret the plan. And what does rural character mean, I mean, I'm not trying to, to beat a dead horse there. I, I think you get yourself in trouble and you are better off to remove that paragraph because someone's gonna come in here and they're gonna go, you know, that's seven hundred acres right there in the middle of A one and it's raw land, why is it in A one? Well, because we're sustaining the rural character. No, we're not, we're improving the quality of life. If you get rid of it, it removes it, it removes the.
All right, Mr. Trammell, what do you wanna do?
I have no need to remove it.
Okay.
If I have one person that wants to, if I have two more, we'll remove it.
All right, next.
Okay, it stays. All right, what else is on nine?
We distributed the, um, text provided by Frank Walker.
Yes. Everybody all right with that?
I think what ought to be here is, is a history.
Well.
And what we, the, what, as I read the, the, um, the thing that he distributed, it was, I mean, it was almost a chronology of the erosion of property rights.
Well, I will tell you that when I sent it back to him, I, well, anyway, there's a little bit of a story behind that, um.
That wasn't almost, it was a chronology of the erosion of property rights, let me.
Um, I, I will tell you, there was a, um, a, um, communication breakdown, let's say. And I said, well, he's, has said he will gladly, um, fix, you know, will gladly do, but even if you keep this, first of all, it is not correctly cited, this is a copyro- copyrighted, um, paragraph and the, it's W W Scott.
We've got that marked in there.
And, but it's not actually properly, um, cited, unless a government is allowed to, um, not properly cite a copyrighted material. And I actually don't know that would be, but if you leave this in here, you need to properly document something that's copyrighted.
Good.
Just, and I think it's a left, might be a leftover from something else, but.
Go ahead, you're able to.
Yeah.
Original.
But if you would like for me to, to get Frank to, um.
It would be preferable.
Okay, I figured.
Yeah, because I didn't like it at all, you, you just hear the music and.
Yeah. Julie, it might be actually easier tomorrow if you can email him, if you don't mind. And then I'll follow up with a phone call.
So what are we gonna do, we're gonna ask Frank to redo that?
I, I actually already did in not so many words, but, so he, I think, is expecting it, but.
The, 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 I mean, I, I think what should be there is, is, is sort of a tease about the history.
Yeah.
We're, a little bit like what, what is already there, but it would be nice to have it locally done, I agree with, I, I support the concept, but it needs to be a tease about the history, not a.
And then to be, not to be funny, I've put it right here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Inside the page.
Yeah.
What did he say, oh, inside?
Inside the front page, because it's not, I mean, it, it's not a, why is it?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be rude, is it?
It doesn't have to be, uh, listed as part of the plan.
Anything else on nine? Okay, let's move to ten.
Only thing I would like to add there is a, somewhere maybe as part of the first phrase that says the vision, uh, for Orange County, it probably should say is approved by the board on October nineteenth, two thousand and ten, or something like that, so that it's, that, that it's clear that, uh, that that is a.
Well, when we approve this, we're doing it again.
You, you could, okay, I mean, it, it, that is a, uh, it, it looked like there was a separate action taken on that. I wasn't part of it, but anybody, anybody remember?
Yeah, it was a, a separate action, it was actually tweaking it because I added the, uh, improving the quality of life for all its citizens.
For all its citizens.
And that's basically the tweak that was done.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess my point with that, it was, it was a specific action the board took w- wanting it to be a certain way and it was left that way, in- intentionally.
Okay.
That, that.
What was the date?
Apparently it was October nineteenth, is that right?
Can I suggest adopted by as opposed to approved by?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh.
I would only add, I think we need to define rural nature.
Rural character?
Um.
Well, that, that.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, I think. Well, I think this is ultimately the crux of the conversation. When you say rural to some people, they think Loudoun County is rural. Because you leave Atlee'sburg and you drive into some beautiful farmland. But someone else would say Loudoun County isn't rural with thirteen high schools or however many high schools it has. So what makes something rural? Is it the people that live there? Or is it when you have, you know, a third of your population in one little corner? Or is it in the rest of the county is rural? Or is it rural, um, you know, what is it rural? Is it the countryside? With so heavily populated areas? Or is it that the whole county is rural?
Well, I mean, I, I came to Orange County, uh, working on land use in a very urbanized area, a very well-developed area, Mason District Fairfax County, and came to the planning commission, and it took me a couple of years to figure out what rural was.
And what, what was rural to you?
At that time, when I walked in, I did not expect to see, uh, a, uh, somebody with a private, uh, towing service in his backyard with some, uh, with a couple of sheds back there, uh, doing, uh, you know, stuff. That wasn't my view of rural. My view of rural, it should have been a silo back there or a, uh, you know, a, uh, a corral of horses or some cattle in the field. And as I begun to realize that rural involves, uh, sort of a, uh, services that people do to help each other, maybe a little bit of what we heard, uh, this, this evening in public, uh, comment. Uh, so, I mean, that has evolved and, and, and I would say that, uh, uh, it's probably still evolving, and I'm sure that it's evolving in, uh, and we come, if everybody here had to write a paragraph defining it, we'd get five different views.
I don't know that we would.
I think it defines more the character of the people within it.
I, and it's see.
And the way we treat each other.
And I agree with Teal, so I, that's what I'm saying. I don't think we would get, but I think when people look at this, you have different viewpoints. You have some people who think rural means, um.
You can't, you, you can't write it down to definition that makes it perfect.
I think you can define what we think rural is.
But if we're talking about the people, now how does that deal with a document that's supposed to be, uh, dealing with land use? I mean, uh.
Yeah, it, e- e- even the unabridged dictionary has trouble defining rural. Because if you look at it, as I have, it has negative and positive. It had, i- i- in one place it says as in the country, or some, some such term as that.
Well, you say rural to some people and they get, I mean, they get it really in their feelings.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I.
It's not a good thing for them.
Right, that's why I say it has positive and negative connotations and definitions, so I, I think we better, better just let people conjure up their own imagination about it to this point.
And we'll let them, um, all goals and objectives for this comprehensive plan should be read in conjunction with.
I agree.
Well, and, and, and I, and I, you know, I mean, uh, uh, we've got, uh, many different people with many different views of what should be here. And, and there are several differing views on what is rural, and I, and I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to constrain, uh, the, uh, uh, the p- decision makers or the, anybody who would read this, uh, and, and, and what the definition's gonna be. I just, I mean.
I, I had somebody just yesterday, yesterday tell me they moved to Lake of the Woods because they wanted to move to a rural area.
I, I say that all the time. They think they live in the country.
Uh, yesterday, yesterday afternoon, as a matter of fact.
Rural is a place of less rules. Urban is a place of.
Now, now, you, now, that wouldn't, that would not define Lake of the Woods.
And you ain't rural.
Yeah.
Well, but I mean.
Well, this person thought they were.
I mean, they thought, you know, that they had trees and, uh, and they'd have, uh, uh, four-story buildings next to them, and they thought they were rural. I mean, I.
You pay for your water and you have high-speed internet. You are not rural.
Damn, I'm urban.
If the lights go out and you can't flush your toilet, you are rural.
I use the. I'm in town, rural.
But you still don't have any hot water, so.
You don't have hot water? What'd you say?
When the, when the power gets out.
Oh, well, unless you have gas.
The water gets gone.
No, because even gas is, is, you gotta have the fans running to shut the system down. Okay.
So are we on page eleven now?
Yes, we are, and, um, the very first sentence, Greg, read that. According to the U S Census in two thousand and ten, the land area of Orange County was three hundred and forty-one miles. I don't think Orange County changed its square acreage in two thousand and ten, so I think actually what it should say is, Orange County is three hundred and forty-one square miles or, um, two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and forty acres. And according to the U S Census. It's the people that changed, not the size of Orange County.
Actually, it did change a couple of square miles between two thousand and ten.
It, it, it does change, believe it or not.
Well, um.
Just have it the land, the land area.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then according to the census, it has a population of thirty-three, forty-one.
It, it, it is not a static, I, I was surprised as well, but it does, it does move.
And then according to the U S Census in twenty-ten, the population was thirty-three, forty-one.
But I agree with the rewording.
Yeah, please reword it. Even, I learned something new today. Thank you, but it just, wow.
Okay, next.
Um.
Uh, I, I've got a little issue with, in, in the, give me, bear with me for a minute here. I have to give you a little bit of background. The planning commission wrestled with this for several months, literally. You'll see in that, at the end of that first paragraph, uh, next to the last sentence, actually, it talks about two, uh, twenty thousand, two hundred parcels. And then, then in the first line of the second paragraph, it talks about thirteen thousand parcels. It, it gets really confusing, and the problem is, among other things, there are parcels in places, particularly Lake of the Woods, that do not have an acreage associated with. And so in the commissioner of revenue's database, there are twenty thousand plus parcels. But only thirteen thousand of them have an acreage assigned to them. And so there used to be a table that had that in there and, and at, at the public, uh, hearings, it was very confusing, and so, I don't know how you tell this story. I, I, as Greg knows, I don't particularly like the way it's, it's told here. But it, it is a, it's a difficult thing to communicate. I mean, maybe, maybe we, we just soften it and say there's twenty thousand parcels that raise, that, that range in size from, you know, less than one to over three thousand and done.
Why wouldn't you put a table back in there and just, instead of trying to word it and kinda do what Jim?
Well, that's the reason I raised the question. There was a table at one point. And it was, it was not, it was not the P- planning commission's table. It was the table from the commissioner of revenue using the definitions that, she's been there, she says thirty-five years, has been using the definitions that have been around for thirty-five years. But I can tell you, it was not received warmly.
And why was that?
Well, it had some odd terms in there. There was, it used, in one case, it talked about urban.
Yeah, but I'm gonna say.
Like, like Lake of the Woods. It's not rural. It hurt, and commissioner of revenue's definition, it's urban, so.
See?
So there, that's just one.
Why wouldn't you just put, I mean, I like what you have in that next paragraph. Why wouldn't you just put, kinda like you did up on the thing, this to this many eight parcels or this many acres and this? And then it just, cause again, it's only a snapshot of today. Somebody theoretically could take a thousand acres and divide it up into five hundred parcels today, and that number's only as good as the number for today, and then put a little thingy.
Maybe, well, ma- maybe.
There's so many parcel, you know.
Greg, maybe that's something you and I can take as an assignment and see if we can capture the, what's in those two paragraphs in some better way. I mean, the story doesn't change, it's just a,
Yeah.
it, it's, it's really hard to follow what that's saying.
What, what message are we trying to get across with this, this paragraph? I know it's the overview, it's existing land use, but I mean, is there some?
Well, the, to, to me, to me, the me- the, the striking information that came out of it was that s- something on the order of ninety percent of the parcels are less than ten acres. But conversely, eighty percent of the land is contained in twenty percent of the parcels. So we're, we're sort of at a, at a, th- those do not conflict with each other. But they, they describe who we are in, you know, in, in an interesting set of terms, when, just the fact that there's twenty thousand parcels.
Well, it'd be easier to, what I can do is strike the last two parcels and put in a table.
Do you have any more on this stuff here? Any more, uh, on your, on your presentation? Can we move this thing out of here so I can see you?
Sure.
Well, actually, um, you know, even the G I S, which I know the G I S has its own little bag of tricks, um, nineteen thousand five hundred and twelve parcels.
That's why.
Wait a minute, actually, let me do this. From zero to three point nine, which is with four being what you can divide, so zero up to three point nine. Sixteen thousand of parcels are that.
Are less than four.
Are less than four.
Yeah.
Which is what is your build, what we define now as a billable lot.
And, and, and I think that's, it, it's that kind of message that, 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 that they were trying to communicate, but it, it never quite found the right way of doing it.
Well, I could, I couldn't, I, I'm positive I have a table that encapsulates this, that, and the second two paragraphs. Could you just like me to strike the last sentence of the first paragraph and then put a table in there that encapsulates that with the, without the verbage? Would that be suitable to the word?
Well, again, it, it's what are you trying to communicate?
Yeah, it's just, just showing where the distribution of, um, acreage and, uh, parcels is distributed in.
But that's when you do, um, you know, again, from the G I S, from four to twenty are three thousand, four hundred and eighty-three parcels. And then less than twenty is nineteen thousand, five hundred and twelve. So there are not that many parcels that are actually above twenty acres.
Right.
That's right.
Right, and I think it's that kind of image that they, that they were trying to figure out how to say.
And, I mean. You can have that sticky note. I mean, it came from G I S.
Yeah, well, you, it, yeah, you can pull it off G I S's. It'll do the sort.
I've got a table that says the same thing as this does.
Yeah, so seventy-five percent of our parcels are less, are billable lots. You can't divide them. Unless there's a residential, and then that's a whole nother ballack.
No, it, it's not a billable lot. I own, I own a piece of swamp, which is a building lot as defined.
Although, I would say, Ed Skelter told me the other day, he can build something anywhere you want. It just depends on how much money you're willing to spend.
For wetlands compensation, I think.
I, I, I think the table that you have is, is probably a better way to.
I did a revision on that and noticed, I think, an hour later, that the planning committee, oh, there's nothing included in that, so.
All right.
This is refreshing to have five-minute discussion.
Let's do a table then. What else do we have on eleven?
Uh, I got something, I, and I don't know if it's significant or not. We talk about, uh, uh, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand acres are in public and private forests. Do we have any sense of how much is, it's public and not on the tax rolls?
Wilderness superior.
But, but it seems to me like that's a significant aspect.
Well, the data is, the data is separated. You could have, you could give the public number and the private number as separate numbers if you like.
I, I'd like to see that.
As I recall, it's overwhelmingly private, but I don't, I, I can't remember the numbers right off the.
And I can look at, uh, Mr. Speed provided me something.
I, I have the table as well. I mean, it's, it's out of a state report.
Yeah, I think they just updated that because, um, the state forester, um, I saw an email from him.
Okay.
Well, I just think that because, uh, uh, that is an element of, uh, of, uh, how much, uh, is being pulled out of the, uh, out of the tax base.
Well, uh, the, but the last sentence gives you that, that there's, there's forty-seven thousand of, of that hundred and thirty-seven thousand that's.
Well, that's in land use taxation.
In land use, right.
But, uh, public lands, we don't even get, we don't get minimal taxes, don't even get minimal taxes out of it.
Um, under C, I think you just need to, um, of that land, I don't think that's, I don't, I don't think that's grammatically correct to start off with, of that land. I think there is, is that a semicolon that we're doing there? I'm not real good on that, but.
I'm thinking just to strike through the first three lines.
How about of that land? Yeah, that's a little bit safer. I get a little confused when you use the semicolon kind of thing there.
All right. Anything else?
Doesn't that of that land refer to the, the sixty-six, oh, twenty-eight?
Yeah.
That's why you wouldn't put a period. You'd put a, a semicolon there.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Semicolon would be for yours, basically saying two, almost two sentences, two separate, two, two different thoughts.
You're, you're, you're. It's almost two sentences and you're fin- you're joining them together?
Right, almost two separate sentences. So I don't know if that'd be adequate for a semicolon, but I just strike it.
Mm-hmm.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
I just know it's not right the way it's written.
Okay.
There's, um, a couple of newspapers, people in here, I bet they can tell you real quick.
Twelve?
Depends what style.
I know Jeff can. Um. Um, under objective A, at the bottom, promote preservation of significant historical areas. What's significant?
I, I typed that one in. I was given that by, I forgot by what commissioner. I don't know. I figured all, there's, it's historic.
Well, I get a little bit of a definition in the bullet down there, not, not, not as neat as you might like, but, you know, it talks about if it's listed or of regional significance, those kind of things.
So that grandpa's outhouse isn't included?
Probably not.
So that grandpa's outhouse out back isn't viewed as a historical area because it's not significant?
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm kinda getting a little.
It is if you live there.
It is if you need to use that outhouse.
Maybe useful, but not historical.
Remember the definition of rural.
It's been there long enough. It's historical. All right.
We're getting, it's only eight o'clock.
Well, unfortunately, Jim, you've been, um, editing and making your cuts for how long now? Two years? This is our.
No, no, no. I say it's only eight o'clock.
Oh, wait, well, the sequel call.
It's already eight o'clock. Okay. Anything else on twelve? Thirteen?
Yeah, uh, the second bullet under objective B. Maintain agricultural forestall and open space land use taxation. What's open space?
Uh, among other things, golf courses.
Yeah.
Then take that out of there.
No, we have no choice. If we have land use, then we have to allow land use. So we have a golf course right now that's in land use because it's considered open.
And also conservation.
Is that required by law?
Yes.
To put a go- a golf course?
Yes.
Even a public or private golf course that's out making money?
There's, there's state law and an A G opinion that says, in fact, there's state code now that says that golf courses, if you have, if you have open space, if you have land use, then golf courses are included in open.
And also obviously conservation easements, conservation easements are taxed as, as a land use.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem with conservation easements.
But I, I'm saying open, the, the, conservation easements can be open space. And conversely.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on thirteen?
The, the, the fourth bullet needs some work, um. Let, let, I'll give you my, my marks and we can talk about it if you want. As you go down to the third line that starts out should, I would strike the word solely. I'd put a comma after the word use. So then you don't need the and. The and needs to come after the word accessory. And then I, and I would drop the last sentence. Cause I don't know what non-agricultural uses that should be allowed for the benefit of community is talking about, so.
Good. I like the lead. What were the other ones you said?
Well, that, the, the, the way I did it, that second sentence in that bullet would read, development of rural areas should reserve agricult- cul- agricultural areas for agricultural use, comma. Other accessory and residential uses in conjunction with agricultural activities. Believe it or not, I took out a bunch of words and it still reads that way.
All right. Okay, so.
I, I think what it's got us.
Other ex- and other accessory and residential uses in conjunction with agr-.
Or other land uses.
Or.
No, I took out or other land.
So take that out?
Yeah. Other accessory and a, and residential uses in conjunction with agri-.
Okay.
Uses that support the agricultural activity.
Strike the last sentence?
And strike the last sentence.
Okay.
Okay.
Well. But I think that defines erage yet.
What's that?
That would define erage yet.
Well, it's already there.
I mean, it, they're there, but something else. So, but, that's all right. What else we got? All right, fourteen.
Uh, last bullet, uh, before goal two. Development and, uh, implementation of resource protection overlays. What do we mean by that?
You can have groundwater protection overlays, deep slope overlays, uh, minimal obstruction overlays, uh, forestry overlays, uh.
So we have to, we have to do those now. So somebody and staff has to create these overlays?
Like that.
Huh?
Like that. No, um, that's an off.
I mean, as I'm.
But that's, I was conveying, I was carrying forward what they, when I first started, that the board had conveyed, uh, to staff for that.
I think that's old, that's been there a while.
Well, the, the only reason is, is, as I'm looking through this thing, if we really follow this, we're saying people should do a lot of things. And, uh, is this, you know, is this now on, uh, on Greg's to-do list, who's to develop these, development and implement resource protection overlays?
Okay, I thought the word.
Well, if you've got a water problem. And, but we have an area where an impoundment might, using our conversation with Gordonsville as a prime example.
Sure.
There may be areas where we need to work in collaboration with the town of Gordonsville of finding or working with, partnership with whatever. Um, you know, like the wa, a water impoundment or such. Well, if you've designated that area for being that, wouldn't you put an overlay there? Cause you definitely necess, you would, let's say this is the prime spot for the impoundment.
Well, I mean, we, we were looking even at the, uh, Route Three area. We're looking some, uh, uh, some, uh, possible, uh, impoundments and, uh, according to Dudley, there's a requirement for a water impoundment to have at least three hundred feet of, uh, of no, no construction. I mean, that becomes a rule. I'm not sure, a, and, and that, that in turn becomes almost an overlay for that. I'm just saying, are we, are we doing this, uh, on a, on a case basis, or are we going to go ahead and, and create these things as a, uh, uh, as a, a task for, uh, Greg?
Well, definitely, let's say in your planning process, you define an area that you want to do that. I'm not saying he, I, I would.
Can you say that consider the development and implementation of?
Or when needed?
A, as, as or where needed.
Well, I, I.
I like, I like, I like T.
That's fine. I just, I'm, I'm looking at this as a, you know, we got, uh, if, if we have a project and we need to do that, we, I agree, we should do it.
I, I hear you.
But I'm not sure that we should just go out and, and start, uh, creating, uh, uh, overlays, uh, for all of these various, uh, protections until we know we have a need for it.
Well, we're underwater. It's underwater, so it wouldn't be. It's under, develop plants, protect quality and supply of surface water and groundwater and other valuable environmental resources. I don't even know what those other valuable environmental resources would be. Um. Maybe if we started fracking here in Orange or something like that.
Well, a lot of that came from all of this, when Bill Speeden kept talk, coming and talking about that, what was it, the spur, the.
Evrona spur.
Yeah, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Evrona, that was the thing that everybody was talking about protecting.
Yeah, I mean, we don't wanna build a chemical plant over the, uh, over that aquifer. I mean, that's, uh, you know.
I know what you're talking about. So you might would have an overlay there.
Right.
If you've ever got to there.
Right, and, just frame, uh, you know, in all seriousness, I mean, I, I did see that as a long range thing for me to do because that, that's what I thought the board wanted me to do two years ago, but if the board's direction has changed, that's, that's fine, but.
Well.
I kinda, I kinda wanted to do there.
I, I just, this is just one of many of these things that we say we're gonna do and, uh, and I, and I, I, you know.
But if you don't have it in the plan, you can't ever do it. I'm just saying. At least if you have a plan for it.
Well, I would say consider, uh, uh, developing and implementing, uh, uh, resource protection overlay, uh, when, or you know, as needed or.
But, uh, the Tiel said that a few minutes ago.
And I haven't, I was okay with that.
Developing.
Okay.
Okay, so, so just long, consider developing and implementing resource protection overlays as needed. Is that good?
Uh, it was the last bullet, development and implementation of resource protection overlays as or where needed.
That's fine.
Anything else on fourteen?
Yeah, the bullet above that, I, I'd, I'd make a little edit to it, um. It, it should, I think it should read require both above and below ground storage tanks to have containment measures that prevent. I think that's what we're trying to say. And you probably don't need the word both. It could just read, require above and below ground storage tanks to have containment measures that prevent.
Containment measure, so scrub water to the places. Okay.
All right. Are we on to fifteen yet?
No. Are we, uh, and I, we want the workforce entry program with our middle schools?
Yes. It's part of the, um, the curriculum and it's beginning with some of the, the keyboarding and electronics and.
And what does that have to do with land use?
I don't.
Well, it's a part, it's one of the objectives for the county. We're not looking just at land use.
Well, a minute ago, it was, it was about land use, so I'm just saying, y'all made the comment a minute ago, I'm just bring, I'm just asking a question, what does that have to do with land use? I'm okay with it being in there though, I'm just.
I know.
I mean, it might start as early as elementary school with some of the exposures to.
All right, okay, all right.
I don't know.
Okay, fifteen?
Okay, the second bullet. I'm not saying don't do it, but I'm saying remove it from the comprehensive plan. I'm not saying don't do it, I'm saying remove it. I'm saying keep doing it. I just don't know, again, what this has to do with being in the land use plan for the county. Continue doing it, remove it. There's, there's several of these bullets in here that ask, it's, it's kinda like saying, why don't we put in there, we're gonna continue to send out tax bills twice a year? It, it's just, it's not needed in this document. And there's several examples like that. Throughout. Put it in the economic development plan, and I think it's great, but there are just several things that are in here that, uh, why is it in here? It just.
I, I disagree, it's, it's.
I'm not saying don't do it.
That's all, that's very. I understand.
I'm saying it doesn't need to be in, it doesn't need to be in there. So are those the only resources that we use? Or what if those resources change and they aren't there anymore? It's in your comprehensive, it doesn't need to be in your comprehensive plan.
But it's, it's in there for what we do now.
I realize that, but there's a lot of things that we do that aren't listed in the comprehensive plan. It just doesn't read well, but.
I don't have a problem with it.
I, I wish you could go over.
Leave it.
Okay.
On the last bullet in that segment.
Oh, no, leave it, it's great. No, leave it, it's perfect.
Uh, evaluate a range of alternatives, uh, CDA, special taxing distance, or VRA from improving infrastructure.
That's what's gonna happen down at, um, your end of the county.
And I, and I, and I think I would do this, you know, uh, as needed, as opposed to, I'm expecting an evaluation report on, on, uh, all these alternatives, uh, the pros and cons of all these alternatives. I mean, whenever we're doing it, I think we need to do that as we're, as we're, uh, looking at projects, infrastructure projects. We should do this. But I, the way I read it, uh, I would use your as needed.
As and where needed. Okay.
Just add that at the end of the sentence.
As and where needed.
Okay, capability is as needed, okay.
As and where needed.
Anything else on fifteen? Sixteen?
Let's see here.
Well, let me do an easy one first. Fourth bullet on the above Objective E is a repeat from what we just did on fourteen, so let's take it out. Let's not say it twice. Okay, so we don't need to say as and when needed.
That's fine. Okay.
We just say.
And I, I've said duplicate.
And they evaluate alternatives. That's the same thing again, isn't it? Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's again, it's the same paragraph. It's the same thing.
But is it because the objectives are different, Greg?
Nope, just a duplicate.
All right.
Let's leave it in there.
We, we say here, create technology zones. What's involved in doing that?
Are we ma, are we getting rid of that other one?
You have to, um, identify incentives for localities. You ha, it, it's a process, kinda like an enterprise zone, but different. It's not, um, it's a process with, uh.
Okay, so, so there is a process, uh, and if we want to, if we want to do that, we have, there's a fa, process. But we don't have to do it unless we want, unless we've identified an area.
We have to initiate it, comply with certain.
Understand, but first of all, we need to know that we wanna do it.
Right.
So, have we decided to create technology zones? I guess this would imply we have.
I think we need a different verb there. We, we, that's a verb where we need, need something that says evaluate instead of create probably.
Huh?
Or consider creation of.
Or consider or something, yeah.
Consider.
Consider the creation of.
Uh, something like that.
Okay.
Cause it could be that you could get some of the, the benefits of a technology zone without officially creating one.
Well, but it, but even, even if we wanna do one, we need to say, first of all, I mean, this tells us somewhere we're gonna create a technology zone. And I'm not sure we've decided to do that.
Right.
Okay.
So, um, incorporate components of preferred development plan recommended by the Wilderness Battle, Battlefield Gateway Study?
Where was this? I'm sorry.
Oh, that's the third bullet up. Or the third, second one down.
Second, second one down, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem leaving that in.
Yeah, we're, we're sort of doing that, I mean.
Okay.
It's.
All right, anything else on sixteen?
What is, you know, I don't think it really matters, but why would it be incorporate components of the preferred development plan recommended?
Seventeen.
That's what, that's what they called it. They called it the preferred development plan.
Really? Hmm. As opposed to the non-preferred development plan?
Yeah, I guess.
The original one. Seventeen.
There, there, there's some, on sixteen, there's some duplications in that long list under, uh.
Yeah.
Uh, under E, um. I, I mean, I flagged some of them. I think some of those bullets can just come out because they're saying the same, or essentially the same thing as the one above it and that kind of thing, so. I can, I can show you what I've got in mind there in terms.
Which ones would you delete?
Well, let's see, let me see if I can find one of the duplications. Uh, there's one that talks about startup somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
It's the third one?
And, and it, and it's repeated again a little bit later.
Start third.
N, yes, the, the next to the last one talks about new business efforts.
So we delete that and I don't.
So delete that one, cause you've already talked about it in the one above it.
Yeah.
So the next to last one?
The next to last one, right.
Support existing and new businesses. You kill that one?
Kill that one and keep the one earlier that talks about the same idea.
Okay.
The third one. Uh, the third one, I, well, let me do it a little bit more organized. On the third one, I would, I would drop the words identify and market incentives to and capitalize the E and say encourage startup businesses, which capitalize on the, just, just cleaning out the language there.
I agree.
Got it, I got it. Got it, got it, agree.
Um. And I don't like the, one, two, three, four, the fifth bullet, cause it talks about culinary and, and agriculture resources alongside historical and cultural and things. I, I, I think we said that enough. So I would drop that, I would drop that one as well. Then I'm okay.
Okay.
All right.
Drop that, drop that entire line?
Yeah.
And then drop the next last bullet as well.
Yes. Next last on that page, cause you've got another bullet when you get to the top of the next page.
Right, right. So next last on sixteen, three.
Right, correct.
Okay.
All right, seventeen.
I would drop Objective F.
Why?
I, I, I don't know that we're in the business of promoting any industry, health related or otherwise, so. And cause if you look at the words, you know, it says things like promote economic partnerships between various medical and wellness businesses, such as testing laboratories and these kind of things. I mean, is that? Could we do that even if we wanted to? I'm not sure. I, I just, to me, it, it's sort of one of Shannon's arguments, that, that's, that's outside of the, outside the, yeah.
Oh, no, you can't, uh-uh, uh-uh, no, it's staying, it's great. It's staying in here. This is the best worded paragraph of a whole damn plan. It is staying.
Shannon's, Shannon's objection.
Grover, is it staying, Grover? It's staying, Grover.
Shannon's objection is not, objection is notwithstanding. I, I, I think it's, I think it's, gets off, off the reservation.
Tell him, Grover.
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, when we, when they did the, uh, uh, the economic study, that was one of the things that, uh.
They, they do have a section that refers to the five.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's already in here, and so that, you know, it, it has health services, one of, I, I just didn't like the, the strategies that, you know.
I don't care.
I'm fine with it. You're okay with it? Leave it alone. Thanks.
Just a question, I'm not, it, it, we say the functional public facility and space needs of all county agencies are provided through implementation and updates of the CIP.
Where are you reading?
Where, where are you?
This is Objective A underneath this on page seventeen, the first bullet.
But you need to get to.
First, oh, that is all three.
I was sort of like, well, how do I, how do I know what the needs are? I didn't have any.
Pay a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a consultant to come in and tell you we need more office space?
Uh. I just felt that that didn't really define what our public facilities were supposed to be, but I, I didn't have anything better to say, so I'll, I'll leave it.
I'd also consider dropping the third bullet, which says maintain and fund the capital improvements plan for the county. That's sort of obvious, but, but it's, it says the same thing in the first bullet.
I agree.
Yeah, it's obvious, it doesn't always.
I agree, I agree.
But the first bullet says it. Implementation and routine updates to the capital improvements plan.
Delete.
Those are.
I agree.
So which are we deleting? The first one or the?
Third, third, third.
No, the third one.
Third one.
But I do think you need to reword the first one.
Yeah, it's, it's a little rough.
I mean, ensure that the functional public facility and space needs of all county agencies are provided through implementation and routine updates. Can you, which is another word for when appropriate or when there's money? I don't know. Commissioner Revenue comes in today and says, you know, she needs a bigger location and she may, you know, this is pretty much saying, and we're ensuring that that's gonna happen. We're gonna build her, her ho, a whole new wing. Cause we're ensuring that it's functional. So what would another word be?
Be mindful of, uh.
How about evaluate or something like that?
Evaluate.
All right, yeah.
So we.
Ev, evaluate public facility and space needs of all county agencies, uh.
Provided.
To provide, uh, I don't know.
To provide, implement.
Just take our provided out.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that, yeah.
Or you could say that you're cons, consider space needs. Or, you know, consider.
Okay.
Yeah.
Si, so just to, just long for evaluate public facility and space needs of all county agencies through implementation of ru, and routine updates of their capital improvements plan.
Yes, and then strike maintaining fund capital improvements plan for the county.
Okay. The second bullet's out, okay.
All right, eighteen.
The third bullet then.
Okay.
Third.
The second bullet and the fourth bullet remain.
Okay.
Eighteen. Nineteen.
Wait a minute.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of hung up on bullet four under Objective B. I, I cannot figure out what it's actually telling us we're gonna do. It says plan for the growth in student population by accounting for the capacity of the schools?
So it would tell me that I can re, I should, uh, I should not rezone, uh, housing because I don't have enough room in the schools? Is that what that's saying?
Yes. I would say, in other words, yesterday. Consider, consider what the projected, uh, future is when you're developing capital budgets.
So given an example, Gordon Barber Elementary School is busting at the seams, so if someone came in and they wanted to rezone, uh, um.
Hundred houses there or something?
A, a large parse, you know, into whatever. You would know that there isn't, you would need, we're saying we're gonna consider that impact of that rezoning on. You would know that there isn't, you would need, we're saying we're gonna consider that impact of that rezoning on.
Our language decision. I mean.
But are we?
I think we should.
Well, proper we require.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Anything on eighteen then, or are we going to nineteen?
Uh, I really don't like objective C. Meet the health and human services needs of the citizens. Who wants to take that task on? Who wants to fund that task?
I mean, uh, develop a plan to meet the needs. I mean, we're talking about, okay, we need, we need, uh, a dialysis center.
You're near done.
Uh, but I'm just saying, uh, we say we need a dialysis center. Uh, who are we to de- are we to determine, the county determines we needed a dialysis center? Or I need a, uh, I need a, a dental clinic or something like that? Are we in that business? That's.
No, but I would reword it in a way that says we would work with a private industry if they wanted to come, how would you word it?
Well, a- actually, there's a free dental clinic that we fund.
We don't fund it, we send them a little bit of money.
You're right. Then we fund it.
That's a drop in a bucket to the money that they give us.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're, that's just, uh, man, I, I wouldn't consider that's meeting our, meeting responsibility of ensuring one.
Yeah, so we have a little.
If one comes along and it's meeting the, and helping the citizens, we, we provide contributions to it, just like we do other, uh, you know, other facilities.
Be mindful of.
Like the rent and, uh, electric bills. Uh.
Acknowledge the needs.
But it says we would address the needs of elderly, disadvantaged and disabled when feasible. We would address the needs when feasible.
Be mindful. I wonder, what does that sentence mean though?
I, I, I don't.
Try it, I guess. But I mean, what does it mean? Well, I don't know.
Good opportunity presents self-funding opportunity.
I mean, there's a lot of statements in this whole comprehensive plan. I just don't know what it is we're trying to say.
Well, these whole sections were, of, as Greg knows, with strategies and, and objectives, I have
Well, there, I mean.
gone cross-eyed over those now for two years. I mean, they just.
When, when health service and facility needs are identified and strive to develop a plan to meet those needs, did we not build Dogwood Village?
We didn't build Dogwood Village, they built some.
No, but that was pretty substantial in terms of.
But how about, that's what I'm trying to say, do formulate a partnership or something, I, I, but we're not, the county isn't gonna build a hospital. We're not gonna build a dialysis center.
And, and, and I, and I will remind you, this is under the category of public services and facilities.
I'm back with, I'm back with Jim.
I don't think we're gonna have any public services or facilities that address any of this. Dogwood Village is not a public service. It's paid for by the residents exclusively.
Would that mean say that?
Although, although the building itself was provided by the county.
The, 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 the long-term care one, yes.
Yeah, that's, I'm, no, yeah, I'm saying that the health and rehab building
Right.
was provided by the county.
But would the county do it again?
Well, when it came to senior living, uh, we helped finance.
Would we do it, let me ask you this, would we do it right now? All things being equal, would, would we do it right now?
If we did not have a, if we did not have a, uh, health and rehab center, uh, in the town of Orange, or didn't have a facility for our, uh, long-term care, I don't know whether we would or not.
It'd be, it'd be a private one, I mean, most of them are private.
They would, most of them are private.
I mean, uh, which is, you know.
All right, and to save time.
It's our problems.
So that we're not here till midnight deciding to have a continuation, which we will not.
We ain't gonna be here till midnight.
I was hoping not.
I propose we dro- we drop objective C, cause I just don't think we can fix it.
If we have.
I'll go along with that.
Okay, get rid of C. Nineteen.
Okay, so I'm back under your thought process, providing for adequate public services, are we really, um, encouraging affordable housing?
I, I haven't flagged, especially the last part of it.
Well, I'm saying consider residential development to include portion of low to moderate income dwellings.
Right, well, first of all, isn't that by, and there's like a code, state code that's some percentage of stuff. So again, why is it in here? I love Josh.
Is there a state, there a state code that requires it?
Certain amount of your.
Yeah, you have the reference in your plan.
Huh?
You have the reference in your plan.
You do.
Damn it.
You also have to address your, how you're gonna take care of the handicapped and the elderly.
That's a requirement.
No, wasn't that state Supreme Court decision?
Then why don't you speak?
Hmm? No, it's actually in that, I pulled it up on my phone. Uh, po- comprehensive plan shall include lists, all these things, for the health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, general welfare of the inhabitants, including the elderly and persons of, with disabilities, so they specifically want you to address.
All right, put C back in again with A C.
No, D, no, D. C can come out, D, D needs to stay.
I was talking about C. Well, that, this is that, that's section up front, that's the.
And, and there are other sections that deal with, uh, affordable housing requirements that you encourage certain proportion of affordable housing.
Yeah, planning commission wrestles with that one as well.
We say we have to, we have to say best promote the, best promote the health, uh, and general welfare of the inhabitants. So the health talks about the thing we just deleted.
Well, I, I think the thing you just deleted, I mean, I, I didn't, I'm not an elected official, so I try and keep, you know, as much as I can keep my mouth shut, but seems to me, it's not necessarily saying it's, we're gonna do it with public dollars, but maybe saying our zoning's gonna facilitate, um, medical facilities or assistance for the elderly. I mean, there's a lot of ways that you can do it. There are also, one of the reasons you put it in your comp plan is in case there's government grants out there, that somebody can point to the gu- the comp plan and use the comp plan to get a grant to accomplish something too. So there are reasons to put things in your comp plan that don't necessarily mean you're gonna do it.
I'd say put it back in, since it's, it's in that category of, uh, statutorily required.
You're using. Down the racer.
I mean, I don't, I understand your reluctance.
All right, so C is back in.
Grover, you okay with putting it back in?
How about we change the word meet to consider, to mirror what we have up under, uh.
Consider, okay.
Yeah, and I think that accomplishes the goal. You just wanna reference that we are cognizant of these things and will take steps.
It was just.
And address the needs of elderly, disadvantaged, disableds of, okay, when feasible, that's worth it, right?
Okay. Back on to page nineteen, what else we have?
Protected populations in the second bullet under D. What are protected pop- populations?
Protected populations is a categorization from CDBG fundings, um, that enables localities to receive s- uh, certain grant funds.
All right.
They identify protected populations, elderly, handicapped, low.
Who, who are they?
Elderly, uh, low-income, but, uh, if they're poverty, if they're a hundred twenty-five percent above poverty rate.
Okay, all right. All right.
LMI, I guess.
Yeah, LMI's.
That is a reason a lot of this stuff is in there, is for potential grant purposes, as much as anything.
But like, you know, when you go to a restaurant, there's like a little menu, like for spicy items or low calorie items.
Triple pepper or something, yeah.
Can we come up with a little, little thingy that goes besides stuff that the state code requires you to have?
Put it in a different font or something, so.
No, but you know.
I, I have an idea for.
I mean, I was joking a little bit, but it, I mean, it is kind of.
To move, to move this discussion along, if it's required text, one of y'all just say it's required text.
Yeah.
If it's gra- grant funding, just grant funding, and then we know to move on.
But, but see, part of it, the tricky part is it necessarily, the specific words aren't necessarily required. The concept is required, so whether you say ensure or review or consider, those are, those are more policy decisions you guys gotta make.
I think Teal's in a hurry.
I know.
He's, he, he's in for rude awakening.
All right.
Well, the planning commission did this over about a five-month period.
Well, yeah, and I mean.
Many times.
I don't need to redo it for five months. Okay.
We're just doing it for five hours, that's all.
Three, they have on nineteen.
I mean, w- we were talking about something on public service stations. Uh, we bought this piece of property, uh, for the, uh, uh, rescue station on, uh, Route twenty. Uh, but as we read the re- I read the regulations, if we wanna build one there, we need to go to the planning commission and have them say that that's within the capability. That's defined in the plan.
If we don't specifically put it in the plan, if we specifically put it in the plan, no, but if we don't specifically put it in the plan, then yes, we would have to go through the whole planning commission process and say that it's in conformity with the comp plan.
So you can slip it in. What's that?
Well, that, we, we, uh, identified a spot and we bought some land on Route twenty
Oh, here you go.
to replace the, uh, uh, Station twenty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as a both a fire, combination fire and rescue station.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, uh, if we don't specifically write that location in the plan, then we have to go back to the planning commission to say it's consistent with it, if we wanna build it.
Right. Any, any government, comp plans are completely, uh, discretionary and just guidelines, except with respect to public facilities. They're binding. A comp plan is binding with respect to public facilities. If we, what we identify in the comp plan is all we can do without going through the whole planning commission, public hearing process. So the, 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 the one place where the comp plan is completely binding on us is in the, in the public facilities that we identify or don't identify.
Okay.
Then you might wanna go back to page eight and add that pursuant to Virginia law, this plan is a guide for the county, but it's not to be construed as creating any binding, leading conditions or duties on the county, except where public facilities. I, I mean, I, not meaning to be funny, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but that's actually not part of state code, that's the Virginia Supreme Court said that, so.
Well, then you would say case law. Or the Supreme Court said.
All right, I'm just, I was just trying to, uh, make sure that if we, uh, you know, I don't, I don't remember, I don't think we actually located that on.
Public facilities is the one thing that if you know what you, that you wanna do something in the next three to five to seven years or whatever, you, we probably wanna identify it specifically in the comp plan.
Okay. I'm ready to go to page twenty.
I've been there.
All right, first bullet. Develop a level of service standards for public facilities and services. Airport, school, water, sewer systems, libraries, parks, recreation, fire and rescue, public health services, and I'm not sure we're in the public health business.
That's health department.
I know, but are we developing standards for the health department? Or is this something that's required again by statute?
Yeah.
Solid waste management. I'm not sure we wanna develop, you know, w- uh, we're talking about a, a, uh, a level of public service for, for solid waste management. Uh, do we say that we have to have a, uh, a certain number of waste collection sites? Uh, again, I, and I know we've got one for public health or for, for emergency stuff, but I'm not sure we wanna be putting ourselves in the business of, of developing a standard for every one of these things.
So strike out public health services and solid waste management.
No, I would strike off the whole, the whole bullet.
Well, I mean, solid waste management, we have to develop a level of service. We're closed on Wednesday. So.
Well, I mean, well.
You know, you, you, you developed it, we actually developed even worse levels.
I know, I know, I know.
And, and fixed it.
Uh.
But, so yes, we do.
I wouldn't get rid of that bullet.
But. Well, but the point is, uh.
I mean, I know your point, but I don't think I could.
The point is, uh, uh, we have to, it's telling us that we gotta send some of our staff to put together all of these level of service, uh, designations. I mean.
But we do. I mean, you've got, you've got the Parks and Rec guy doing a, a, at Dog Park down at Parks, you know, Parks and Rec. We have staff at the public library, we have staff at Fire and Rescue.
But we're not talking about level of service standards, we're talking about providing those services. But it, that's a difference than developing a standard for it.
I would, I would disagree. I say we do set a standard for it. It might not be a very high standard, but I say we set a standard for all of those things listed. You, you may set a standard through the hours that you're open, through the, um, number of staff that you have, you know, that might dictate the length of time in a long run.
How much county's got to supplement fire and rescue with, um?
All right, all right.
Public health services if, if, what would be with some of them.
I mean, I, when I, when I think of service standards, I think of the one we use for fire and rescue, where we say eighty percent.
Yeah, maybe, maybe we should consider a different, a, a different label instead of service standards, call it something else, uh, uh.
How about?
Service law.
Uh.
Provide services through public utilities.
Maybe it is.
Public facilities.
It's just, it's the word standards, and, 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 and that comes across as a, as a criteria, uh, and if we use that, uh, 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 develop, uh, uh, develop services for public facilities.
But you, you do have a service standard, but how, how, when you go on a rescue call, call, when are you supposed to be there?
Eighty percent of the time I'm supposed to be there within fifteen minutes.
Then you have set a standard.
I have set a standard for that. What's my separate standard for my, uh, uh, library?
What the librarian has set with the library board.
Or transportation is another one, but sort of.
And then it approved by others. Transportation, what VDOT tells us they want us to do on our six-year plan.
All right.
Next.
Teal, do you not wanna be here? I'm feeling a little.
No, I, I made it plain. I read this thing. Yeah, you can sit here in words, but it's, um, I'm happy.
Okay.
So y'all are tweaking.
I got one more issue on page twenty.
We just wanna have some, you know, if you work on it, you have, you have some skin in the game, you have a little.
We took this thing from, I mean, a gazillion pages down to thirty-nine pages a while back, when Zach wrote it in American.
Uh, okay. Uh, the second bullet under objective G, uh, including seeking scenic byway designation for the Rapidan. I don't think we should do that.
It's not scenic byway anyway, is it? Byway is a.
Or scenic reserve designation.
Yeah, I, I, I think a byway is a, is Virginia tournament uses for roads.
Yeah.
Cause, cause you see signs, this is a Virginia byway.
Scenic river designation.
Well, but I, I think Lee's questioning the, do we, do we wanna?
Well, yeah.
Well, how about if we just cut off, if I may, just make a suggestion, I put a period at the end of, uh, the first half of that, um, right, Rapidan River, and then just put a period, cause I think that, yeah, yeah.
The word river. I, I'd go with that.
I would, I would go with that.
Okay.
Or, um, I don't know that you would take it out, but you could reword it instead of include seeking scenic byway, um, continued or investigate or.
Well, I, the reason is, is I looked at the guidance for it, and it puts all kinds of additional requirements on it, so I'm not sure we wanna, we wanna add that to our, uh, list of hurdles that we have to go if we wanna do anything along there.
That doesn't mean that they're not, we've already talked about that, that doesn't mean that they're not sections of the river that we might not wanna do it on.
How about including evaluating?
There you go, Teal, I like that word. Are you okay with evaluating, Grover?
Evaluating.
Yeah.
Evaluating scen- is it scenic river designation? Okay, thank you.
Including evaluate?
Evaluating the scenic river.
Because if we don't wanna do that, we should stop the lady from coming next week or next.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then we can, I can work on her then.
Anything else on twenty?
Give her some of that RSA Kool-Aid you're drinking and she might, um, change her mind.
Twenty-one.
Um.
Do, do we wanna talk about the Town of Orange bypass and the Gordonville bypass? I mean, is that still in the plan somewhere?
I've got those marked.
I mean, is that, I, I, I had, I just marked them for a question. Is that something that's still alive or, or is this just old language that didn't get purged, or what is it? Does anybody know?
Is it required by law?
Or, yeah, or is there a grant?
Isn't the Gordonville bypass still?
I thought they were looking at that long-term when we met with VDOT. Wasn't that mentioned, or was that just my imagination?
I remember something recently about the Gordonville bypass. Hey, well, speaking of VDOT, what did VDOT have to say? Did we ever get our comments back from VDOT yet?
Yeah, they're happy with what Josh has submitted, so, um, yeah.
You mean they're happy with the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, the transportation element that Josh submitted, if anyone, verifying with that.
That's not in this document that they have. Josh sent them some more language, which they approved, but you don't have it now.
Right. It's just basically expanding while we've, what the board's already adopted, uh, with the six-year plan, and then, uh, then showing the map of our existing state roads, major roads in the county. We had to add those. I think those are, is there anything else?
Um, yeah, but the, the Gordonville bypass, when I spoke to Debbie, the last, um, RRC, the R, 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 how many Rs we have?
Three Rs.
Three Rs, the triple R C. Um, she actually indicated they're not gonna seek the bypass plan anymore.
So that can be removed.
Oh, that's what. How about the Town of Orange? Do they have such a plan? I, I mean, I remember hearing about it y- years and years ago.
Can you look into that? Can you look into that?
Yeah, I'm not sure what the proposed alignment for the, um, Town of Orange bypass was. I knew that there was something on May Friday, but I don't know if that's really, I mean, connecting up, I think, with, um.
That's, that's not really a by- by- the bypass is more, the original intent was when you get to the light at twenty, at fifteen, and you look at the school, there's a reason you turn for the school because straight ahead went up to twenty, three miles out of town. It came out by Greenwood was the intention.
And that's, no, no intention.
With the intention you bypassed, having to try to drive.
Drop the last two bullets?
I don't know.
That's fine.
Um, the last bullet on the page. Um, the last bullet on the page, partner with towns of Gordonville and Orange in pursuit of viable passenger rail service through Orange County. That rail is actually already going through Orange County. Do you mean that you want the train to stop?
Yes. Soon, um.
It stops me some mornings, so.
Remove that.
It's already going through.
How would, how would you like to?
I don't care. I guess it just needs to say what you, what the intent of that was, was it for?
Hey, why don't you say a stop for passenger rail services?
There you go.
Or access to.
Access to, that's so much fun.
Whatever.
It's your access through Orange County.
Access to passenger rail services to Orange County.
Then I guess on the next page that.
Stopping in Orange County?
I don't care.
Uh, next page, first bullet. We say, uh, about the fifth line, fourth, fifth line down, identify and develop transportation improvement projects. I can easily identifying, I'm not sure how we develop transportation improvement projects. I would delete the undeveloped.
Ah, Grover, are you gonna develop a parkway on Route Three?
Uh, yeah. We're not gonna develop it, we're going to identify it.
And plan might be the word, not to be confused with develop as in, I understand develop, the plan, but I think he planned the plan.
Identify. Still. Well, I'm saying, I, I mean, even the planning, uh, requires a bunch of engineers to go down there and figure all of that stuff, however figured identifying it, but I don't, uh.
Um, you also need to remove that Gordonville bypass plan again if you wanna get rid of that.
So were there any other changes before the Gordonville bypass pa- plan under that general bullet?
What was that again?
I wouldn't get rid of the Gordonville bypass, but, yeah, cause.
We were talking about getting, confirming it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But. E- e- except for making three hundred and seventy-five dollars a pop for every poor trucker they catch going down Main Street. There, there needs to be another place for tractor-trailer traffic to go. Somebody's gonna end up getting killed for on the school.
So, did you get that other change?
No, that's what I was asking about, I, I didn't think so.
The, the one where develop, we didn't, we were changing the word develop somewhere.
Yeah, identify, I just say identify that.
Where are you?
Okay, okay.
This is the first bullet, fourth dot out.
Oh, I found it.
Develop, just identify transportation improvement projects.
Okay. Gotcha.
Identify transportation. Okay.
Uh, the l- last three bullets under, on, before objective C. Are we gonna get involved in that?
Yes, we're currently involved at the regional level at the R, at the three RC.
Okay.
Uh, coordination, and I, I would certainly encourage us to retain that because if grant funding becomes available, if the option of that becomes available in Orange County, that'd be good for us to add.
Alright.
Okay, it can be R C three, it's also done through tours and.
Okay, we're doing it on a regional basis, that's alright.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else on twenty-two? Twenty-three? Twenty-four?
Yeah, I have something on twenty-four. Um, the language under the purpose of A two. Should mirror the language that's in the text, uh, a little further away on, whatever, page twenty-six. And, and here, I, I took a stab at it, Greg, to, to read something like this. Protect the characteristics of the areas of the county that feature a mix of agricultural activities, comma. Neighborhoods, comma, and small-scale commercial uses, cause that's what's actually in there. It's, it, it's that mix that gives it its characterization.
Under purpose?
It's purpose, right. And if you read the definition, as well as if you read what's on page twenty-six, uh, under that, that's what it says.
Can I have that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If, are y'all, here, thank.
That was A two.
That's everybody.
Um.
We deleted P E D.
Well, yeah, because I'm actually gonna, I have a question.
Cause that was my.
About the difference between.
Maybe you have to take P E D out.
I'm not gonna say I'm not, I'm, I'm, for now, we'll say I'm okay with that, but I have a question about village and town suburban. If you read them. They're minus the town part of it, obviously, cause the town is the towns, and we have nothing to do with the towns. But they're the same. And theoretically, you can do the same in A two village in the suburban area.
Well, you got some differences though, you got, I mean, there's public water and sewer in the town and, and, uh, town suburban and, and then, and then.
It's just. I mean, I get that, it's, it's what you are saying that you can actually do. And you actually have some public facilities where there isn't a town.
But Lake Woods.
Like Lake Woods, like going out Route Twenty, out of the town, like, um, going out Fifteen. You're saying theoretically, there is no difference between what you are allowed to do there. Because you're saying, um, that. You're allowing some commercial, you're allowing s- some residential. You're allowing, you know, you have some rural pockets in there, you're, I mean, it's, it's the same. It's, it's, it's a different name, but it really means the same thing.
I, I think there's, I, I, the, the planning commission felt there was some significant differences, for example. Level of intensity, villages were small, almost entirely single-family, uh, and the like, whereas where the, the town in suburban, you had. The towns, obviously, and Lake of the Woods, which were of a completely different scale and, and, uh, uh, density and all those kinda things. A- as well as having public water and sewer, which allowed that density. The his, the village, the, the three villages that were identified were, are all basically historical, you know, collections of stuff.
I, I get.
I think village got defined to us for like thirty minutes tonight.
I get.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying, but I'm still saying ultimately, at the end of the day, you are not differentiating between what you're allowed to do there.
Well, look at the definition under town suburban, the last word.
I realize what you say, I realize what you say the definition says, but what your intent is, you're not really, there's really truly not a differentiation between what you're allowed to do. You could open up a general store outside of the Town of Orange, you can open up a general store in the, um, A two area, you can open up a general store in Village. You're gonna let residential occur in Village, you're gonna let residential, I'm just saying, there's really truly, it's all, it's all a shade of gray. It, it's, it's just a different shade, it's, so, but it's still all gray, because you're letting, and I'm not saying you shouldn't, there's no difference. You're not, you're not saying, well, only five percent of this in, in this area, or twenty percent in this area. I'm actually saying, it's, says this. It's just a different shade of gray.
We've just named it different, but you do the same things.
You just named it different, it's, it's, it's still, it's still bread. You can call it a roll, you can call it a biscuit, you can call it, but it's still bread. I keep talking about food, I don't know what's up with that, but it's just easy for me. There's really truly no differentiation.
No, I'm not sure really how to refine that in a broad sense, I, I, and, but where I'm, where I was coming from, when I was promoting a couple of these concepts, was that, you know, a lot of this will come, but.
I don't know either.
Delineating the three languages will come at the zoning ordinance stage, where we develop, you know, this, what, what distinguishes those two, you know, so we take it out of those streets, if they're, and actually have differences on intensity.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I think I would just call it town and get rid of suburban. And that A two area would be what you would put around the town, because that's what you let it, that's what, that's what you're saying you're putting in there.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I think the, the planning commission stuck the word suburban in there.
I'm not talking about the planning commission anymore, though.
I know, but I, I, but let me tell you where the, the word suburban came in, because Lake of the Woods is not a town. But it meets every other test. That was, that, it was as simple as that. I don't think anybody was hung up on the label at all. Uh, but that's where, that's the reason for the, cause at one time it was just town. And somebody said, Lake of the Woods is not a town.
Yeah, it's town suburban residential, I think, from the first iteration.
Yeah, it wa- yeah, at one time it was a mouthful.
I mean.
So I.
There doesn't need to be three things that basically say the same thing. I, I'm just saying, but I don't care. At the end of the day, I mean, it is what it is. We're, we're gonna, the funny thing is, we're not, it's no differentiation between what we're going to allow there, or not allow there. What are you allowing in Village that you're not going to allow in Town Suburban?
It's the other way around. It, it, the, the intensity runs the other way. What are you allowing in Town Suburban that you're not gonna allow in Village? And, and one thing is a, a moderately intensive commercial development. You ain't putting that in a village.
But I'm talking about, I'm talking about, I'm going backwards, that's what I'm saying. What, what are you doing backwards? I'm talking about the backwards thing, and you say no school, well, Unionville, y'all got marked as a village, and there's two schools in Unionville.
Yeah, I do, no, I'm just, I, I said, you got school, that's a different, that's a difference between agricultural and village in terms of public facilities. Schools, uh, and libraries.
So, if you needed a school somewhere and it was zoned agriculture, that means you wouldn't build the school there just because you've gotten in the comprehensive plan that it's marked agriculture, you'd put the school there. So, and that doesn't, that doesn't stop the school from going there. If public water needed to run through agricultural zone, or that A, A, A one area, you wouldn't stop the public, you wouldn't stop the sewer and the, um, water running through it.
I mean, last time I looked, the middle school, Locust Grove Middle School is zoned ag.
So that's my point. There doesn't, you don't, there's, there's the same, we're not, we're, we're making it look like they're different.
Still. Well, I, let, let me, let me cast it a little bit differently.
Okay.
I think we wanna make it look different, cause I think we wanna communicate a different message. We wanna say that in the, in the villages, for example, we, we want them to. Have the characteristics that, of that small community, everybody knows everybody, you can walk the streets to, you know, everybody's house, basically.
Mm-hmm.
It's that, it's a scale, it's a really small neighborhood-like scale, whereas the towns, take Lake of the Wood as an example, and let's call it a town for a minute, so we don't have that debate. Uh, you know, that, that's a, that's a third of the population of the county.
I realize that.
Certainly not a, not, not the same as village scale. There's also multifamily residents there. There's sizable commercial establishments there. You, you don't want any of that in a village, and we wanna say, that's not we, what, what we want in our villages. We want the kinda thing that the lady was talking about here tonight, you know, that. The neighbors put together some kind of a little place to sell their tomatoes.
Sale building.
So it's, so I, we, I think we're trying to make a distinction, I mean, maybe, maybe it's not quite, not done well enough yet, but I think we're, we're trying to make a distinction.
Can I maybe explain something? I think might, might answer what you're asking, and, and Greg said it. It's at the zoning level, let's use, for example, if you adopted this map. And then you did the zoning districts, and you adopted two new zoning districts, we'll call them VC Village Commercial and VR Village Residential. And then we define the development standards for VC and VR, and we're only gonna allow those in the village areas of the comp plan. That's where you begin to delineate. What can happen in a village area, because you've now created a VC Village Commercial Zoning District, a VR Village Residential District, and you can't have that zoning if you're in an A one. You can't have that zoning if you're a town in suburban.
Right, but then you get what, what, what happened tonight, and you zone her Village Residential, and she's not zoning Village Commercial, and she can't sell her fruit.
But I'm assuming that's how, that's how you control it. At the end of the day, the, the, the comp plan is the, the view from thirty thousand feet. And then the zoning ordinance will be the fine detail of how you actually make it different in a village district as opposed to an ag district opposed to a town.
Alright, well, I do have a point, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I look at the, and you see, uh, if I'm talking about residential here, I got sick, significant grouping of residents along primary ar- this is agricultural. And moderate-sized named subdivisions with private streets, and I come over to the village, and I'm looking at significant concentration of residential development along with areas of open land. I'm not sure that there's any difference between the two.
That's kinda what I would say, not very high, obviously.
And, and, and we ought to have something that, that, if we can't define the detail of what's there, to be able to define the, the scale. Such that when we are, uh, when we are trying to develop the, uh, zoning ordinance that cover these things, we've got some difference in there, and say.
Well, and really, to be honest with you, A two and Village are, are the same then.
Well, and that's, and, and if we're saying.
Except when you were just taking that consideration.
No, and, and if we're saying that, okay, uh, uh, you know, villages, do I, uh, you know, do I say a village? Can't be more than a hundred houses, I don't know, I mean, that's just a, there, there's a, uh, uh, i- if you're, if you're trying to define scale, and I'm not trying to use that, that as a number, or even if that is the appropriate measure.
Well, we've put, remember, we've put, we've put boundaries around the villages. They, they, they're, they're already scaled from the standpoint of what's in and what's out. Those, those, those blue areas that they would, they would turn around.
Understand, but, but.
And some of the blue areas are bigger than the towns.
Yeah, and, and if, but I'm saying, I could, uh, I could build myself another village, uh, in, in the agricultural area.
That's what I'm saying, let's say, for example, in your zoning ordinance, you created a, a Village Residential District, a VR. Or a village, you could have a combination district, a V R C or whatever, and in that district, you allow. Business downstairs with a dwelling upstairs, which was a very common thing in villages in, in days by gone by. So in our village district. You're allowed to have a small commercial enterprise downstairs with a residence upstairs. You're not gonna be allowed to do that in another zoning district. That's how you, you ultimately regulate it.
But, but now I'm, but, but, but that's, uh, I'm saying that public water and sewer are not available in this, so I'm talking about being two acre parcels. That's a little bit different than, than, uh, you know. I mean, I may be able to have, you know, it's like the general store out here, and I've got a business on the upper, lower level, and a, and a resident above it, but I'm talking two acre parcels. This is not a village where, you know.
But, but a lot of these, a lot of the villages that were identified in blue on that map are very tiny parcels. They, they were way before we even had a zoning ordinance, and they're on. You know, twelve thousand square foot lots and things like that.
We have some. I was gonna just add that, you know, I, I, I really was pushing the whole village concept, because I think. Sort of my vision of the rural character is, you know, you have these historic villages, and I certainly wanna see uses from the zoning administrator perspective. I certainly wanna promote uses that are scalable to that, you know, that, that's, that rural area. I don't wanna see rest, you know, big restaurants or anything like that.
No.
I mean, it's just, you know, you have, you have your neighborhood, what's called neighborhood convenience, and you have the boundaries, and. There, there could be, you know, changes somewhat, you know, instead of significant concentration of residential development, because we can't have significant concentration development, first of all, because I don't think the market's gonna be there for a while, but also. You're gonna have your environmental constraints, you're also gonna have, you know, you wanna be compatible with the existing uses, the historical uses that have been there, you know, like general stores and what have you, or, um, auto repair shops or something like that. But the villages were, are, are, in, in my view, are, are to maintain and promote that small character of those areas. That's just.
But I, I can have, I basically do the same thing.
But even if the area is not designated as a village, you're not.
I can create a village in A two.
You're not des- I mean, all jokes aside, you're not designating a Somerset as a village. But Somerset has the exact same things there that you do in Barbersville, Unionville, or Rhodesville.
Well, it doesn't have a significant concent- concentration of residential development.
But you've got the commercial uses, you've got post office.
But you can't say it has the same thing and then say it doesn't have one of the key things, which is a significant concentration of residential development.
But then if you did it, it could have that, though.
But, th- th- that category is relatively fixed in this plan. It says, there, here are the, was it, what did we end up with, three or four? I forget what it is now. Villages, period. Bing, that's it, done. End of conversation. There aren't any more.
Third.
You're not in that blue, you don't, you don't qualify for any of the zoning that, that Tom or, or Greg are talking about.
I, I certainly wouldn't advocate creating any.
So. We're not creating any new villages, we're just, we're recognizing the three or whatever the number was.
Well, then I do have a point, and I can't find it in here now, because my eyes are starting to blur, but under transportation, we talk about. Um, corridor work. I can't find it, but.
What's, what's the cut, what's the idea?
Well, it's like, it's like, um, talking about, like, Route, the Route Twenty corridor and road improvements along Route Twenty corridor. But yet we put all of these village designations along the heavily, and, and we say, and we actually say in here, I mean, my eye. Um, adjacent areas of commercial services for the convenience of residences, businesses near primary intersections, but at some other point, I can't, like, so I can't find it right here. But at some other point, I can't, like, so I can't find it right now, cause I'm getting kinda tired. And it says, you know, improve transportation corridors and, but you're putting everything at intersections. Which it generally happens, I get that, but we're kinda talking out of both sides of our mouth. Are we improving the corridor, or are we putting everything at the intersection? Or, and what are we doing at these intersections to promote safety?
Now, signals and turn lanes and stuff like that.
But it's not mentioned. But then, but we're telling people in this village area, um, that they want them at primary intersections.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, in terms of, 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 yeah, if I create this as a village, and I provide, uh, some zoning categories for the village that I don't have in the agriculture. But I can still, in terms of creating the, the density of, of residential, the density of commercial, I can still do that in agricultural. I just don't have the zoning, which means I can't stack them on, on top of each other.
Because that happens so much in the country. Not being funny, I don't know, I, I don't even know why we're even saying people going up in the village. I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna build a, a store and an apartment in shops in Rhodesville.
Alright, listen. Are there three people who wanna change the categories?
I, I, well, I would drop potential economic development.
I do wanna drop it, too.
I'll agree on that.
But other, but other than that, I, and, and I, and the wording that I talked about under purpose there, I'd like to change, but other than that, I'm.
Can you read that again, please?
Well, I don't know, my eyes are doing what yours are doing. Let me try. Protect the characteristics of those areas of the county that feature a mix of agricultural activities, neighborhoods, and small-scale commercial uses. That's A two now, we're talking about, not villages.
I'm good with that.
And how is, and I still don't get how that's different. But I guess it's, I'm still getting how, it's when you do the zoning that makes a difference, but how would that be different?
What, what, what can, what, what would we do in a concentration in agricultural land or village? What could we do in terms of zoning differences?
Well, one of the things you're gonna have to cross the bridge on is, is whether you wanna do something with your two acre lot minimums. And in an A, maybe in the, the more concentrated protected A zoning, that it's a five acre lot minimum, or a ten acre lot minimum. I mean, there's certain things you can do to protect areas, or twenty acres for that matter. And so those are the, the ways you begin to protect your, your.
The other thing is, I mean, you just go take a look. For example, go stand, uh, in, in Unionville at the post office and look and see what you see. Then go stand in, in one of the A two areas, I don't know, down on five twenty-two by, uh, La Hor Road. You see entirely different views. In one case, you see lots of houses, maybe a couple of cows even in, in, in Unionville. But when you get down on five twenty-two at, at La Hor Road, you know, there's a, there's gigantic farms on one corner, actually two corners, and houses on the other two. Two houses, two.
Like, I guess then.
Those are different, and we should, we should acknowledge that difference and, and protect it.
I like, I, that, you're helping me with that? Um, but what I wanna see is, I guess, or what I wanna need, or need to have a better understanding of is, what are we going to do that is going to differentiate between what you're allowed to do? And if, if Tom's suggestion is, well, then in the A one areas, you've got different acreage sizes. Because I guess, I'm still back with, with Lee and I, I think Lee and I are saying the same thing. E- even though you may allow it more commercial, or more housing, or whatever, it's still the, it's still relatively the same is what you're going to allow. What might not, what might be there now and what you allow are prob- could be two different things. You might right now only have two houses down in La Hor at that corner, and you have twenty houses in Unionville. But what are you doing to differentiate the two from becoming the same thing?
Well, we're, I think we're gonna be, we will be doing two things. One, in the comp plan, we're going to say, see the differences? We like those differences, and we, we plan to keep them that way. And then when we get to the zoning ordinance, we can put some teeth into that.
Okay, because I don't read that and see that when I read it. I know you've worked on it so much, and, and I think that's great that you've done that, and, and you have been able, in, in, in your mind for two years to envision how this categorization works for you and is, and is different.
But I, but I take your point, we need to, we need to articulate that.
But it's not articulated very well.
Yeah, okay.
And I don't know what we need to do. Even if we say, may, I mean, not to be stupid, we only have three, the village areas. These are these three village areas, and that's listed in this, this definition. Um.
Add it to the purpose.
But, but, but I see, I see other villages being created.
Then every five years, when you update the comprehensive plan, if another one is, then you're updating the comprehensive plan.
It's, it's in the agr- it's in the agricultural area.
If, if you allowed one, when you update the plan, you recognize it, I guess, is, is what you do. But I, I, I don't think you're gonna create another Unionville, or another Rhodesville, or, uh, or, 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 or another Barbersville. I mean, they've been there for, you know, hundred and fifty years plus.
I mean, when you talk about, if I could, it, it just, to move along, is that when you talk about creating a new one, it's, you know, you're almost talking about planning your development.
No, I'm just saying that, if I look at the A two, and I look at the A two, and I say, I, I just start the, you know, uh, I, uh, I start concentrating the residential development as much as A two allows. Uh, I have the, uh, you know, uh, and, uh, I, I put some commercial, uh, there, which is allowed in A two.
Well, maybe, ma- how about, how about this? Under definition of A two, it says, it says pockets of relatively concentrated residential. How about we say pockets of residential, and then under village, we say significant concentration of residential? Does that do a li- a better job?
That might, that, that helps, that helps to say.
Cause that's, I mean, that's certainly what we're saying.
And, and, and not meaning to like get wrapped around the wheel, but that's how you delineate the difference between the two.
Well, it's a concentration, and take that concentration out of there.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so for the definition of A two, pockets of residential development interspersed between blah, blah, blah.
Cause that's what it is. I mean, you've got, you've got thirty houses, and then you've got thirty farms. In a village, you've just got fifty houses, and maybe a ten acre farm, like the lady had tonight, but. Ten acre quote farm.
That helps, that helps to differentiate. I'm not sure in terms of, of the, the, what we've got under the bullets, we've, we've done a lot, but at, at least that, uh.
Well, we, we can, we can clean those up as we, i- if we, if we get a common understanding, I guess is probably.
Yeah, under town suburban, allow mixed development in close proximity to town services and employment resources. I think I understand now why that's written like that. But I don't know that at this time, talking about the towns of Orange and Gordonsville, that you wanna promote a lot of mixed development outside of those boundaries. But I know why that's there, because it's taken into consideration Lake of the Woods.
Well, it, it specifically is areas adjacent to the town boundaries.
And again, I'm saying I don't know that you would want to do that, because you're creating a bit of sprawl. I mean, using the town of Orange as an example, if everybody built up around the town and didn't do anything inside of the town, how is that helping the town prosper? Because it's in the county, it's not in the town.
Yeah, but I don't think the town does its own thing.
If it's adjacent to the town, they're gonna end up annexing it, or where the hell are they gonna draw it?
Or do you want them to exit, annex it?
Ninety percent of it's surrounded by easements, it's not going anywhere. Jordonsville's not much different.
How would you characterize Willard and Shore as a Somerset ridge? I mean, uh, that's concentrated, I mean, we, we put it in economic development.
We, we have that discussion as well. Um, I would, I would look at those as, you know, you have that very, very high concentration of residential development. You have a mix of, of residential types. Um, you have a, a recreational, well, not safe, an open space facility, um, you're near a major highway, but you don't have any commercial uses in either of those developments. So, you know, I would consider that more along the lines of town suburban.
You have a landmark.
That's true.
And signature station.
I mean, within the develop, yeah, within the development.
Yeah, right now, it's just, it's economic development.
And we, and we do talk about higher density residential uses in economic development. Uh, so we, we're, it's not that we've, we've left that out, but, uh, okay. I'm just, you know, I mean, if we look, I'm, I'm looking at your, uh, density chart, and yeah, there's a big density around Lake of the Woods, but I go across the, cross Route three, and I got another, some pretty heavy density over there. In fact, uh, you know, I've got, uh, townhouses, which are even more dense than Lake of the Woods.
Right, and we, we went round and round about really how to classify that, those particular areas, uh, because at one time, there's mixed use designation, and then there's.
Understand.
On, on economic development.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it, it's very dense, and it has public water and sewer, and it meets a lot of the tests that, that town does, but.
I mean, I, I. Yeah, I would, uh, I mean, almost, uh, at least parts of that that are already, uh, built up or zoned for it uh, would be called a, uh, a.
Town suburban.
Town suburban.
Yeah, I mean, there's certainly a, wait, that, we went there, many times, and, and, and I agree with you, actually.
Okay.
I, 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 I mean, if you, you wanna try to keep these definitions applied as consistently as you can, and there's a case where I have argued that we didn't apply it consistently, but could've.
But now, when we. But now, when we talk about, uh, uh, economic development, and as we're talking about the things we wanna do on the Route three initiative, we're talking about creating some towns in there.
Right. Yeah, I know.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Alright, so where we are then on page twenty-four, are we settled on what we have for the purposes that we can move on, for the purpose of moving on?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, I don't wanna revisit this, but I, uh, but we're getting late here, we need to get through some more of this.
We need to get through it. And we should speed up here in about three pages. We may slow it down on these three pages, but.
Okay, is there anything else on twenty-four? Number twenty-five.
I'm married to an auctioneer, this slow number thing is killing me.
Do I hear twenty-six? Do I hear twenty-six?
So.
God, good, god.
Twenty-six.
I, I do have one, one thing on twenty-six that, that we, I thought we picked up, but we didn't quite do it in, in one or more of the public hearings. Under A two, the second bullet has the term minor size, I mean, sorry, moderate sized subdivision. We, we, we were asked to give some definition of that, and I, I think that probably the bullet should start out reading, say, something like a range of, and quote, minor to major named subdivisions, cause that's what we have, and those are both defined terms that exist, and so to, to address that, that point, which I thought was a some splitting hairs, but.
Yeah, because I was gonna ask a question, what's the difference between significant and moderate?
Right, so that, we can use existing definitions.
Okay, uh, just to make sure I have.
A, a, a range of.
Minor and major names.
Ra- a, a range of comma, quote, minor to major, close quote, comma.
Why would you put the comma?
Cause it's, cause it wants to read a range of named subdivisions.
Oh.
A range of.
Yeah.
Name. Subdivisions, comma.
I got it, too.
Minor and major.
Minor to major.
Minor to major. That's defining the word range, is all it's doing.
With private streets, strike it, okay, okay.
Yeah, but then you can put a period after roadways. Cause we just said, we just defined the size. That was an attempt to define the size.
So, take out that are consistent with existing size.
Right, that was an attempt to define the size, but I, I think it's probably better done just using definitions we already have.
And we don't want promoted, promote existing size ranges, cause we have a fair amount of, um, non-performing lots out there, so.
That's all I had on that.
Um, the very last paragraph, that very last sentence, the plan for these areas is based on a modest, modest, modest increase. I'm sorry, I was at work at five. Um, and the number of similar, similar or compatible mix of uses, especially adjacent to existing residential commercial developments. I get the especially adjacent to existent, existing residential and commercial developments. But I kinda wanna know, again, I'm still hung up on, like, what does that statement before it mean? A plant, oh, modi- modest increase? And I think if it just said, the plan for these areas is based on a moderate increase in the number of similar or compatible uses existing to residential or commercial developments.
I mean, I like the term infilling on that.
I, I, I'm, I'm okay with the infilling up there, but I'm talking about, I, I mean, it's saying like, hey, we're great with this increased number of compatible uses. Oh, and we, and we really like it when it's next to adjoining stuff. But don't you want, don't you want your development to be where it already is?
That's how we're gonna create our villages.
Yeah, I, I, I.
I think, isn't that what it says? It says adjacent to existing residential and commercial development.
But it says especially adjacent. I'm saying remove the word especially, because then it is saying we want it adjacent to existing residential commercial development.
Well, it won't be exclusively adjacent, I don't guess, but.
But you're telling people that's where you're targeting it to go to.
Preferably, and adjacent to.
As opposed to that, as opposed to.
There you go.
Yeah, that's, that, that's the same idea.
Preferably, I like preferably, thank you, Teal.
Yeah, okay, twenty-seven.
And so that's a little word change, right?
Yeah, it's just that word.
Okay, got it.
Okay, anything on twenty-seven?
Um. Where do we have any village that has public water and sewer? It's not generally, cause guess what, it's not there anyway. There's no public water and sewer in any of these three, um.
And one of them down in Zora.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with saying, actually, I, I edited the sentence to drop out, the, throughout the identified land area. You say you put a period after the word available to say public water and sewer are not available.
There you go.
Period, that's what I did.
Yeah, so take out generally, too? There you go.
Take out generally, and take out throughout the, and the rest of it.
And just say public water and sewer are not available.
Capital P.
Again, I think I would list the three village areas. Because you're, again, you're saying near primary intersections, well, we have more than three primary intersections. So you're saying you want.
Hmm, do you?
Well, I mean.
Twenty and five, twenty-two.
It depends on what you can define as primary.
Primary road.
When we were defining it for tourism, we had like five or seven.
Primary road is a, is.
You know, cause we did thirty-three, two thirty-one, five twenty-two, six oh one.
So I would just say.
I mean, I, I don't have a preference.
The three areas designated.
Yeah, you can put a sentence in there, say the three areas.
Well, and you wouldn't need to say near primary intersections, you would list the actual three intersections that they are. Cause you're saying you're not creating any more, correct?
Yeah.
We just say three areas are designated.
Yeah, just like we do in economic development, there's two areas that, and we say what the two are.
Yes, yes, sir.
Sir, just add a sentence, three areas are designated.
Right.
Yes.
So just mirror the, the economic development one. Yeah, I, I agree with that, cause that's, that was the intent.
Okay, good.
Under town suburban, I would y- remove the last sentence of that, for example, okay? I mean, again, it doesn't mean we're not gonna do it, it just doesn't need to be in there. We have joint meetings and the J, you know, it, all that, that doesn't need to be in there.
Wait a minute, where, where, where are you?
First paragraph.
Well, it's on the, the first paragraph, it's just the last example, the, the last sentence, for example, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be in there.
Oh, 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 okay, yeah.
Strike.
Again, it doesn't mean we're not gonna do it, it just doesn't need to be in there, for example, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Anything else on twenty-seven?
Uh, I would, I would strike the term through rezoning. Let's see, how do I get you there? Un- under, un- under the last paragraph of town suburban, third line down, very end of that says, non-residential use may be appropriate through z- rezoning if consistent with the existing adj- I, I, you know, I mean, what are you, what are you talking about there?
Well, if the proposal's consistent.
May be achieved through rezoning?
But, you, you're, you're saying you can do it if it's, if it's consistent, you don't need to talk about what you gotta do to.
The mechanism.
Yeah, the mechanism, that's, I would just drop the through rezoning idea. The, the thought just is a little cleaner, is all, it's no big deal, but.
They worked everyone?
Um, hold on a minute, other ones are available on this. Um, hold on a minute, other ones are available in this areas, the prominent type of development, single-family detached dwelling. All the greater density or a non-residential use. I, how did you say, well, I would say or a non-residential use. May be consistent, no, may be appropriate, I don't know, but. Adjacent uses, I guess I'm trying to figure out the, how did you word that, what did you say?
I just dropped the the two words, through rezoning, I just took the mechanism out, didn't change the thought at all. May not even be rezoning, may not even be a rezoning.
Oh, I got you, I got you. I got you, I said may, okay, you, if consistent with existent existing adjacent uses.
Existing adjacent, adjacent, right.
Does it have to be served by public water and sewer?
In a town it does, yeah.
But if it's it's adjacent property, it's not in the town?
No.
Still needs to be served.
Okay.
Has to be adjacent property within the town, though, just like the same things, the the boundaries are drawn.
Okay.
So the area around the town. Now, there's, the areas, that area is bigger than the town, it's the suburban area.
Yeah, I say they're drawn.
Right, so there's already public water and sewer in all of those areas?
Right.
Okay.
It couldn't be in the town without public water and sewer.
But it could be in the suburban area without being in the.
No. No, we defined it as having water and sewer.
And that's what I'm saying, so air, all of those areas.
Have public.
Suburban area has, so there's public water going out to Willow Grove and all of that out there.
I don't think the line goes quite that far.
Then it wouldn't be considered suburban.
I don't, I I don't think, is Willow Groveans, I have to look at the map, but I don't think it goes out that far.
But you've got it there, cause that's all the way out on fifteen.
Is it still in town?
No. But you've got that, that yellow on the map, all of that out there. What's going out of the town of Orange?
Yeah, on twenty eight, yeah.
So w- public water and sewer runs out there?
I don't think so.
Then 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 either the definition needs to change or that area needs to change.
Yeah, it probably is overdone, I don't think it goes quite that close to the line.
And I don't think all of that area has public water and sewer.
Yeah, you can take a look at it and see how far it goes, I I don't really know.
John Cooley has a map of that.
That was key. That was one of the key different differentiators, though.
Right, cause that's kinda what, I'm I'm sorry, I don't mean to get wrapped around the wheel on that a little bit, but, um, and I don't know that water and sewer runs out going outside the town of Gordonsville, all the way out fifteen that far. That's a good little hunk out through there.
It goes pretty far out that way, because it, the, one of the plants is down there, the sewage plants.
Dusty little farm.
We'll look at the obstruction map, yeah.
I don't know that all those homes.
You have to have water going all, they have water going all the way to Bullwood Mill.
I'm talking about fifteen going between Orange and Gordonsville, coming out of Gordonsville, like past Inwood. Cause that was one of the things for Pam, I mean, well, whatever, I know that it it comes out there, but I think it stops just after Inwood.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know, just something to check into, appreciate you for doing that, thank you.
Cool. Hey. Uh twenty eight, I believe it is. Twenty nine.
Drop the bottom there.
Yeah. Thirty. Thirty one.
I would consider under public education at the bottom there, see, um, see, see how hard it would be to put the the new numbers in there, I think they have the new numbers and and some of these we know aren't right, for example, it talks about the the high school being at fourteen eighty, and I think the number is like fifteen sixty five or something like.
Fifteen fif- eh.
Yeah, it it.
Fifteen fifty.
It it may be worth the few minutes of effort just to stick the new numbers in.
Last year, one of my last updates, I might, Matt gave me the most current.
I, yeah. Right, and and we have new numbers and it might be worth sticking them in there, just, cause somebody's gonna look at that and say, well, that's not right, it's.
Okay. Gotcha.
I think it's fifteen fifty.
Okay. Thirty two?
Yeah. Third paragraph under emergency management. I would say, uh next, the third from the bottom is, five volunteer fire departments and three county and volunteer emergency medical services agencies.
Simple, kind of clear.
I would also drop the word unique in the first line of that paragraph, I don't, I don't like to call something unique unless it's unique. It's just one of my things.
I don't like the word awesome.
I'm, but, yeah, I'm.
The uh sheriff.
So it's three county and volunteer emergency medical?
Yeah. And then the next one under sheriff. The sheriff, the sheriff is cover a wa- range of public functions and vary from locality to likely locality, why don't we get specific to Orange County?
And that sentence, I think, should go and have the s- the next sentence read, the the office of the sheriff provides all law enforcement services. I don't, I don't think you need that first sentence either.
Okay.
Well, okay, uh, but we might talk about uh investigating crime, pursuing offenders, uh dealing with uh animal control, there's a couple of other things in there.
Yeah, cause.
Courtroom security.
Yeah, I don't know that you do rem- I mean, I I hear you.
And does the sheriff maintain the local jail?
No, he does not, that was the other deletion.
Yeah. Actually, it used to. Yeah, cause Donald was in jail.
Yeah, that's not anymore.
You said Donald was in jail?
He was in jail.
I was making the answer.
But uh and the all Virginia sheriffs provide security, I mean, again, let's make this specific to what Orange County sheriff does.
Okay, so how about the third paragraph, we just delete everything up to the last sentence?
What's that?
Um, we just delete the third paragraph?
We have some sheriff language.
No, because we haven't, we haven't included that in the, in the uh, office of the sheriff provides law enforcement services, including investigating crime, pursuing offenders, making arrests, provide, and I would add, providing security in local uh courthouses, serving legal papers, summon jurors and witnesses, execute court judgments, uh animal control, I mean, those, those are the things he does.
We we have in the budget book and in the other document, we did, we we've got a.
Seems like it's taken up from the website, yeah.
I I would just do the exact stuff.
How about just, what what, did you leave that first sentence in?
Uh, under sheriff, I would take the first sentence out, I I.
Or you could reword it and say, the sheriff's office is responsible for a range of public safety functions in Orange County.
I was deleting the whole first uh first sentence.
Well, I get you, but I'm just saying.
And I was saying, the office of the sheriff provides all law enforcement services, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, in the second paragraph, and then adding the things that he does in the last paragraph and deleting the third paragraph entirely.
That's what I was asking, yeah, that's what I had, okay, got you.
And animal control, because you don't have that anywhere in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
He does do animal control, but I do, you know, a range of public safety functions.
Well, you can leave that in, I don't have a problem with that.
No, that's fine, you care, got it, you got it.
It's tr- it's more, it's try and, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just the the whole, the whole list of things, I think we.
Yeah, and the next sentence over on the other page, sheriffs are assisted in their duties by deputy sheriffs. Really? I don't know, and I, I'm so glad that's in here.
Why don't we not have it in there?
Be funny, how about we not, there we go.
That's fine.
So we're on thirty three now, the top sentence goes.
And and I would, under the, under F one, public water, third paragraph, it starts out the town of Orange filtration plant, that sentence ought to be moved up to the previous paragraph. Because that paragraph is really talking about Route twenty and other things, and we just talked about the town of Orange, so. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
The the town of Orange filtration plant has capacity two million gallons per day should be part of the previous paragraph.
Yeah, yeah.
The new paragraph starts with RSA also supplies.
Yeah.
And I would put it, in the next paragraph, I'd put a period after the, in the third line, Rapidan River. I don't know that we need to say that it's at the wilderness shore subdivision off Route three, that's you know, irrelevant.
Uh, the other thing is, is we haven't said anything about sewer. If we're gonna talk about water, we ought to talk about sewer.
Yeah, good point.
I'd move, I must have just moved part of that to the back and to include the sewer part.
Well, if you're putting water here, I think you have to put water up the sewer.
Right, oh, no, I understand, I understand.
Uh, do we need to say anything about stormwater?
No.
Not in my presence, not in this time, sure.
No.
Not in your cop plan, huh?
No, sir, no, sir.
Okay. I I actually have a question in, on that same page, the the third line from the bottom, where it says improvements program, and then in parenthetically, as amended. Is there such a thing? Is is there a de- or is there just the Virginia Department of Transportation's six-year improvement plan?
No, because we amended it.
But we amended.
But did, but did they amend it? Did VDOT amend it?
Well, once it's amended, it's now, it's now the six-year program.
Well, that's.
I don't think you need the as amended in there.
But we could incorporate all that language still, too, that you were drafting.
Right.
And are we gonna get to see that? That's the best answer ever.
That's a nine forty-five answer.
Hey, Dan.
Do we need to put something about any plans we have?
It's a good thing we like you.
Yeah, I think I'm done.
Yeah, I can, I can.
Uh.
No, actually, I, once all the changes are done, I wanna see this, will we do anything?
I know what you're talking about.
Couple things, I'm on the way on page forty-two. Uh, Julie just brought up something.
Uh-oh.
Do we need to consider any of the the water and sewer facility changes we might be making along the ru- Route three corridor? So that that's already in there, uh, or do we have to con- does, does an RSA facility have to follow the same rules as a county facility?
I don't think so, I don't know the answer to that, I don't think so, though, I think it would be different, I think the RSA facility would have to go through the normal process, the planning and.
But through us or through their processes? Cause they have to have, they have to get, they have to hold public hearings and stuff.
Right, I think they'd have to go through their processes and our processes se- independently, I don't think our cop plan would allow them to bypass the process.
Okay, so then we have to consider whether or not we wanna, since we don't know where they're gonna put it, I don't think we can do it before we wanna get this out.
Okay.
All right. Thirty four, thirty five. Thirty six, thirty seven.
You wanna do this one, you got me too. Oh, I will, it's, okay.
Thirty eight.
Do you wanna talk about falling or not?
Just kidding.
Thirty nine. Forty.
Uh, um.
Okay.
Still best reality.
On, yeah.
Oh, twenty twenty.
Can you just make a re- a note that we blew through this stuff, by the way? It's amazing.
Okay, uh, uh, I'm on page forty-two when you get there.
Okay, um, I don't know that, I was asking a question about some of this stuff.
Which page?
Well, just some of the general information.
Forty two.
Okay, so someone wants to come to Orange County and move their I'm not saying they can't get this information, I just don't know that some of this information. I don't know how to say it.
Reflects positively.
None, none yet.
Reflects us in a positive light.
Well, it is reality.
Um, well, there's a whole lot of things reality that you don't need to necessarily.
Advertise.
Advertise in your comprehensive plan. Not that they can't get this information, but we're advertising that we have a whole lot of low-income houses here, and low-income households, and we're advertising that we have a high vacancy rate, and we're advertising, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, this is, this is what we're telling people we are, and it's a little bit of a self-fulfilling prophecy.
Well, we also have a high unemployment rate compared to the state of Virginia, I mean, I I.
I, and in my.
I share your concern, I don't, but I.
It's the reality, I mean.
I mean, that's just.
Well, it might be the reality, but what does it have to do with our land use plan? Are you required by law to have it in there?
Required by law to consider it, you're not required by law to include it in the plan.
Uh, is there a grant hanging on that if you have this chart in here?
Grant because we're poor.
Yeah, you go get a grant, all right.
It's like getting him out of.
Answer your question, nothing on work.
I mean, it's, it's nice information for some, but that's why we moved it all to the back, if you remember, cause we started out with it at the very first few pages.
Used to be the first thing you saw, that's right.
It it did, and and it's nice that you moved it to the back, I think the supplemental information that you need to support what you talked about in the front is in there, should be in there. But I don't know that we need to be talking about people's incomes or, um, you know, building permits. I mean, I don't care, leave it in there, but at the same time, wages.
That if you're looking at moving a business in, would be important information.
Yeah, but you would get it from Karen through the economic development office, and you wouldn't put it in your conference plan.
And what did the gentleman tell us, is most of the time, the time they talk to you, they've already looked. They don't, they don't need Karen.
Well, and they also said they read your conference of plan, so I don't know.
So you're, and there you are, you're putting it out there for them, they're not even calling you, you're not even knowing that they're looking at you, and I don't know.
Yeah, but that's what they would, I mean, that.
I I I just, I just don't know that it makes us look, but that's just a comment. I don't care. I do care, actually, I care a lot, actually, but I just don't know that.
What would you pull out of the, any of the, any? I mean, our.
Really a lot of it. I mean, why do you need it? Do we really need to, what, Teal knows, I might need to know this, but the area of Timberland by county enforced types?
Where are you on that one?
I'm on page fifty-one.
I could ask the same question on page fifty-two, do we care about the tourism in two thousand and seven?
Yeah, and and not to mention, some of the data is really, uh, well, I mean, considering we are in the age, and some of it is a little old, I don't, I mean.
We just sort of like the, I mean, this is back to our, uh, we wanna grow this, uh, the size of this plan to, uh, you know.
We just got the twenty twelve numbers. Like this last one.
I mean, this is cool information that might be cool on the website.
I mean, this is positive, the tourism is positive, you know? But it isn't, it is.
While while we're rambling around on page fifty, there's a, there's a citation in the middle of the chart.
Yeah.
Josh.
Caught you. I thought I'd do a non-controversial one, anybody wanna argue about that one?
Let me give you another simple one there.
I like citations in the middle charts.
Okay.
Uh, on page three, or excuse me, on page forty-two, we have chart three. It says the total housing units in the county are fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen. If you go to chart sixteen on page fifty-nine, uh, which talks about wells and drain fields, it calls the number of housing units as seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventeen. Now, if you look at for in Orange County, it says fourteen thousand, six sixteen, you come back here, is the fourteen thousand, six hundred and sixteen just the county and not counting the towns, or is it the entire county?
It appears that there needs to be a footnote on page forty-two, that says county only.
That maybe that's, it may not, it may not include the count, the the town statistics. I don't know, or, and do.
We'll clarify.
Huh?
We'll clarify, we'll verify.
Yeah.
But I guess, I guess, does it need to be in there? You're the one, you're the man who has to keep up with this stuff.
Actually, I kinda like having the data, because it's, this is what the use of the land, you know, the people that that occupies the land, and I think that's a big part. I just think that's a big part of our land use and what our goals and objectives.
So what does, what does the vacancy rate have to do with any of that?
It tells us, you know, how, the housing conditions and.
We just rezoned two hundred and fifty townhouses and have a forty-two percent vacancy rate, obviously, we were not paying attention to it.
We, we don't have a forty-two percent vacancy rate.
Or an increase of forty-two percent, sorry.
It's two, it's two percent.
Wasn't working out this morning.
It's two percent.
Thank God, that was pretty bad.
All right, is there anything else we wanna change?
I don't like the income listed in there, I don't know, just.
I like it as a reference, but I'm not sure that this needs to be the reference.
I think it's pretty normal for inclusion.
Yeah, what, how, how do you, how do you like page?
I don't, just because everybody else does it, does that mean you have to?
You don't wanna be abnormal?
How, how do you like page fifty-nine where we talk about private septic? Ten thousand dwellings with private septic. You want a definition of rural?
It's not a rural.
At least it says septic and not cesspool.
Or how, uh, certain kind of houses?
What's that pipe called, when, the pipes that you just have coming out, a discharge, whatever?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I love page sixty-four, anybody got a problem with that?
You are.
I'm headed, I'm in a, I'm going through a map.
I. Oh, we're gonna talk about traffic counts.
Do we, do we need to look at the, the VDOT text?
Oh, I, yeah, I've got one, I got one here, that one's page fifty-four.
Of what page? Back on page eight.
Fifty-four. We talk about, uh, the, uh, what animal control is, what the animal shelter does, what the county attorney does, what the finance department does, but we don't spell out the constitutional officers.
We talked about the sheriff.
We did, in the previous section, we, we defined it very well, but we've got, uh, a bunch of other constitutional officers, and I think we oughta have at least that big a paragraph on each one of them that describes.
So expand D and.
That's right.
Say something about it. All but the sheriff, maybe?
You've already covered the sheriff.
Or take out constitutional officers and list each one of them.
That's what it said, yeah.
Yeah.
List each one of them separately and explain what they do.
Okay.
I mean, we, we abbreviated the, uh, sheriff, and we don't need to be much longer than that on any of the others.
Two sentences, sentence.
We also have that in the budget.
I was gonna say, there's something in the budget you probably can use almost as is.
Oh my God, you might run out of alphabet, it might mess you up a little bit.
You gotta start with AAs or, yeah.
Cause you're on X.
That's Y, she's only got one.
Y, what's the, oh, that's ten.
And it's not the Department of Tourism and Visitors, it's just like so not there.
Okay. Okay.
It is so.
It's so not there.
Well, it's kind of.
Look at the sheriff's office in here again.
We're getting punched.
The sheriff's office is not in here.
Yeah, the sheriff's office.
Or you could do D constitutional officers and do a paragraph under each one, and that way you wouldn't run out of letters.
Yeah, D two, D three, D four.
See, we have a separate.
We are getting punched.
And really include animal control on the sheriff.
And it's only nine o'clock, we used to be able to hack.
No, it's ten o'clock.
This is ten.
Well, we used to be able to handle this to midnight.
We're gonna be here.
Shoot, it was like one or two before with Thomas Grove, Grady Groves.
They used to, those were the things that came in at seven, we now come in at four. That is.
They always come in at four.
I'm on page sixty-seven.
Why do we have to leave sixty-four blank? I mean, why do we have it?
Yeah, I, I think there's a couple of those.
Because when we get there, we go.
I just wondered, I mean, it's a whole big page.
He didn't wanna renumber the pages.
Is that right?
Maybe not, well, yeah, now this.
Okay, which, which, which one are you on?
I'm on sixty-seven.
No, it's, it's just to provide some separation.
Okay.
Most of this we've already talked about.
Then do the colored sheet.
I just wanted to flag it.
Or something, come on.
Okay.
I, I, I'll start, I'm on sixty-seven, the land, the land use map.
Really?
Which page are we on?
We, we're dropping potential economic development, so we need to recast, recolor that, and the, but my question is, uh, since we don't talk about it in the economic development discussion at all, the, uh, Aerojet seems to me.
Go back to A, A two?
Either that or, 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 you know, do something else, I don't know what.
Aerojet?
Yeah, I mean, I don't.
What's its zone?
If it's commercial, leave us.
Well, but this is.
Industrial, okay, then why can't you just, we, we had the brown, that was industrial, why can't you just?
It's industrial.
We're calling it economic development, industrial is economic development as well, I mean, the, the, it's not a zoning category, it's a, it's a land use which is broader.
Yeah.
I don't have any problem with leaving that economic development.
Yeah, okay, well, then do we wanna, then my question is, do we wanna say anything about it in the text, cause right now, it's, it only talks about fifteen and three.
That makes sense. To put a blurb in there?
Put a sentence or something that, I, I mean, I don't care, I just, it, it's gonna beg the question to anybody who hasn't seen this before.
I don't really care about the land use.
References. References.
Why'd you talk about this, why'd you talk about all those, and that great big blob there, you didn't say a word. I mean, I, you could say it's a single installation, one user, but.
Well, you've also got one there on twenty.
The airport.
The airport. You may wanna say something about that as well.
Right.
But you don't need to say much, it's already done.
Temperatures, uh, fallen temperatures.
What's that?
Is that what you're talking about, the temperatures area?
That's the whole air, it's the airport.
Airport, airports, yeah.
Airport complex.
And just mention that under economic development, along with the Aerojet. You don't need to talk about it much other than just address it.
And we also on, uh, up at twenty-eight, twenty, tax map twenty-eight, we talked about, you need to relook at that town boundary looks, I mean, I, I, I think Shannon's right, I, I, I don't know where that water sewer stops, but I don't, I know it doesn't go to Willow Grove.
No, I've got the. We'll verify.
Cause they're on Will.
Get it back to the appropriate, what the boundaries in for the water sewer.
And really, to be perfectly honest with you, I'm o, I'm o, I don't know how to say this, I'm okay with some of that area, but it really needs to be shrunk back in out there, because, um, you know, just using Willow Grove as an example, I don't think they would have made that large investment on that plantation if they thought that a strip mall was gonna come out there beside them, so that's not, it, it's not a compatible use for them, and considering their really good investment to the county, and, you know, we're getting a lot of, um.
You know, having said that, I just realized, they are having, they've told me, they're having some discussions with the town about getting water and sewer out there, wa, water, not sewer.
Water, yeah, because they have some issue with water.
Yeah, I think they got a water problem.
Cause they're gonna create a six thousand square foot spa and then twenty-five water rooms and.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe we, maybe this is, I mean, we certainly, if they agree to do that, we don't wanna say, no, it doesn't fit the comprehensive plan, you can't do that.
I'm not saying that that would stop them, but would you really wanna support a, a high, I mean, would we, uh, because it would be in the county, a high intense rezoning right there, right up next to the Willow Grove plantation?
No.
And, I mean, you know, they are getting recognitions from all over the United States, and, I mean, a strip mall would probably diminish, um, this, so I think.
Yeah, you may wanna, I, I'd look and see where the water and sewer goes first of all, and, and consider bringing that back in a little bit, I think, I mean, I don't, clearly that, the intent is not to do something like that out there.
That would be incompatible for them.
Right.
The other thing on the, uh, Village at the corner of twenty and six eleven.
That needs to be strong.
Twenty and six.
Uh.
And twenty-two?
That's one up, uh, you know, up the, in, in block twenty-two.
Thirty-two, thirty-three.
Uh, I really wonder that it really goes that far south.
Would you like it just to, uh, go take out the dog leg, um, at the bottom part of twenty-two?
Well, I, I think you just oughta look at, I mean, uh, other than the, uh, the waste collection site there, which is actually in the, uh, green area, uh, I'm looking at that, and it, it just doesn't appear, as I've driven by it, to constitute what I would think of as a, uh, uh, as a village.
You, you did the detailed GIS exam on that, can you recall what it looked like enough to describe it to us a little bit?
I, I actually didn't agree with that one, I thought it should be left as it was.
I don't know how was was.
That's, that's irrelevant, but, cause it doesn't.
So what I hear you saying is you think it ought to be smaller?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I concur.
Okay.
And I also, the Unionville one. I mean, I don't mind that stuff, and I know what's already there, but what do you want to be there?
I ju.
And along with Barbersville. Just because there's a fire department there, doesn't mean you have a bunch of stuff going up around the fire department. And just because, you know, and then, then look on the backside of that, you got Barbersville Vineyards. Why, why would you have Barbersville Vineyards in the village area? And again, people don't go out to, I mean, they do go out there to drink good wine, but they also go out there to enjoy and experience and it, however, how is it defined now, I can't remember anymore.
Well, I, to me, the Unionville, Rhodesville looks pretty, I mean, I'm very familiar with that area, I lived near there, so that, that looks about right. And Donald Brooks, I think, walked every square inch of it too.
Of course he did.
In, in, at least in his mind, since he was a boy, and, and, and he, I think those are his lines ultimately, frankly.
Um.
So that one, I, I think is pretty close to, to being accurate, that's the only one I could speak to directly.
How many miles down is that? That's all the way, I, I mean.
What, where are you?
Well, okay, let, let's first of all, let's go to Barbersville, cause that one's the easy one, I think. You definitely, that's stuff south, I guess, with that, of twenty, thirty-three. None of, that shouldn't be in Village, I mean, that's, that's Barbersville Vineyards. Why would you want to put, you know, significant concentration of residential development around?
So I understand what you're saying, it's, uh, south, at the southwest intersection of twenty and thirty-three?
You told me, which part are you talking about, southwest, the southwest?
Well, where, where's Barbersville Vineyards, is this little area right in here, none of that should be, I mean, it's hard to tell on this map, is Barbersville Vineyards included in that? But really, truly, if you're looking at it, it should be the intersection of twenty and thirty-three. And then maybe down just a little bit on thirty-three to like where Dee's Market and all is, and then that's it.
What's, what's on the south? I guess you'd call that east of twenty and thirty-three.
Well, what they've got is, they've got Lamb's Lumber and all down there, but that's, what does a lumber company gotta do with a village?
There's still.
That's just.
Yeah, there.
Stores and stuff, but I try to make it with.
There was also.
It doesn't make with the vineyard.
Okay, it doesn't.
Yeah, I'd say that, yeah, I don't think, cause I can see the roads going to the vineyard, I think.
Well, I'm glad you can't.
Cause there's that loop that goes through and then back to twenty, and then the vineyard's south of that.
I think the Barbersville area is a bit large.
I mean, not back to twenty, back to thirty-three.
So you, you'd like to see, since, Jonathan's right about Barbersville Vineyard being out, um, but the Lamb's, the northeast, northwest section should be taken out?
I, I'm saying, you know, uh, how mu, how many squ, how mu, how big of an area is this? I mean, I don't know how big this is on the map, the map is eight and a half by fourteen, or eight by eleven, or whatever it is. How many acres is that?
We can provide a estimate for that.
Because you've got a lot of area here that, I mean, behind the, um, fire department, it's, it's, it's a field.
It's not very big though, Shannon, I'm, I'm looking at Unionville, look at Village Road from five twenty-two back to twenty, that's a one point eight mile road.
Okay, I'm just saying, it looks all big, come to Barbersville.
So you take that scale, but I'm just saying, take that scale, and it looks like the, the, the total of the blue is half of that. So you're looking at a mile in the, in the Route twenty direction, half a mile on either side of thirty-three.
I'd like to see these village areas blown up a little bit more, so you can actually see what they are.
Just email it's a, email it's a, uh.
You know, when you're looking at it. You know, when you're looking at a map, and they'll pull out areas.
Yeah. Well, can you, do you have this on there?
Can you blow it out?
It's probably gonna get blurry.
No, do you have, do you have?
He had it for the planning commission at one point, you could see it pretty well.
Have you overloaded, overlaid it with parcel, uh, loan boundaries?
I don't, I don't really have that ability.
You don't think it's a personal.
I think it could be a rough one.
Well, I'm saying even adding that in the comprehensive plan and, and pulling that out.
No, well, I'm not saying, yeah. Well, I, we got a public hearing to go, we may, we may make some tweaks to this as we move forward, I mean, I don't know that I would stop the process to do that now, cause we, we'll have another go at this, you know?
I, I would like to see it.
I mean, you, you, yeah, I think, I think they could give us new information, but I don't think, I mean, I, I wouldn't wanna not move forward while we're waiting.
I'm not one to ask you to, I just wanna say I would see it.
Yeah.
All right.
We got the S A P. There, but, we'll do our best to just, uh, everybody put parcel lines and keep it around.
And then the amount of acreage that you're putting in, um, economic development, and, um, the town suburban without the town, cause we know what the towns are, it's that other stuff, the suburban part of it. I'd be curious about, and then the village.
Do we need to look at transportation language, or is that available, or do we?
That's available, I did make copies, I apologize for that, but we do have.
Are we gonna make some copies?
Yeah.
You can email that too.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna wait around for it. I don't wanna wait around for it, I just.
Oh, come on guys, this is great fun.
Why don't you stay here while we go home, eh?
I was being facetious, were you at a learning team meeting at five AM this morning, I don't think you were.
We can email that after all tomorrow.
All right, so if you get that, get us back what we have for, um, the changes. We can review that, and we can vote on it next meeting and then send it to you.
Send it, yeah, okay.
What?
So does the Madison Arbor World Resort District have to, how does that impact that village area, or does it?
Public hearing, yeah, February twenty-four.
Doesn't, we haven't qualified any standing new ones.
Okay, okay.
Do you want, well, we can talk about it later, but do you want us to, to see if other locations are available, or is this room gonna be okay?
No. This room is not gonna be okay, so other locations won't need to be, I would say, I mean, just look at what came out of the planning commission, it's more than what it fit in here.
I think it was like, what, fifty?
Eighty, eighty-five, do you go to twelve minutes?
Go to twelve, I think, six, I think, something like that.
I took notes, there were, I, I know there were, I forgot the number, I think it was twenty-three speakers or something like that, or twenty-eight.
All right, so to make sure I understand correctly, Greg is gonna get the edits to us, and at the next meeting, we're going to just, or prior to the meeting, obviously, review it, make sure it encapsulates, and then at the next meeting, we set the public hearing, okay?
All right.
You look confused.
No, I'm just saying, at the next meeting, we might make some other final changes too.
Well, that, that's still possible.
It's pretty minor, cause you're gonna have to announce within hours after that meeting, I suspect.
Yeah. That's right, so I mean, but, uh.
So what are you tentatively striving for to be the meeting?